To call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for March 5th, 2025. Jamie, will you call the role?
Anderson.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Bunsy.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
uniform.
Thank you. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right. No guest speakers. Okay. That takes us to the first public comment, which can be about anything that is on this afternoon's agenda. Those in the room come up to the podium to speak and then we'll take Zoom comments and just limit your comments to three minutes each. And start with telling us your name and where you're from.
Yep, absolutely. Hi, my name is Alex. We're I live on Taylor Street. I'd like to comment on Agenda Item 6B, the Short Term Rental Report. First of all, thank you very much to the City Council for allowing me just a few brief minutes of your time to make these comments. The City Council in that report, when we get to that Agenda item, has been presented with a request for consideration of exemption for certain circumstance where a short-term rental holder's license was deemed to be void because of a transfer of ownership. And I would contend that in certain specific cases, these licenses should still be valid and thus no exemption is required from the council. The report prepared by the City Attorney states that under the prior short-term rental ordinance, the transfer of property would void license. However, upon closer inspection of that ordinance, there is no language to that effect. That's a fact that the city must have been aware of because in the 2024 revision to the ordinance, specific language was added that a transfer of ownership would void a license. Before 2024, that language did not exist. Moreover, the attorney's report lists that the establishment of a single-member LLC constitutes a change of ownership. However, there are several precedents under Michigan law that make it clear that this action does not constitute a change of ownership. I've included those examples in my written correspondence with the city manager, which is included in the agenda today. Thus, in those specific cases, I'm not talking about everything that's going to be considered in that report that you guys will review today. It should, it seems that the license should still be valid, duly authorized, and renewals to be processed without further delay. I understand that the city is attempting to reduce the number of short-term rentals through attrition, but to do that based on events that in many cases, I understand, occurred years ago before there were caps in place, before any of the regulations were revised. Seems not in the spirit of the new, of the regulations that were passed to grandfathered in responsible, accountable, short-term rental license holders. So in full transparency, I am a short-term rental license holder. I want to be very clear on that. But I hope the city will, the council will take this, these comments into consideration as well as the details that I have included in my written correspondence.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for your lotterie. Anyone else in the room like to speak?
Good evening, afternoon. Kevin Phillips, SYC Slipholder and lifelong resident. I'd like to comment on the No Wake Propulsion or Agenda, I think it's eight. Lifelong person in the community from using a small boat to a large boat, now a member of SYC. I think it's something that should be looked at and addressed. There are some, certainly some dangers. I've been on that water since I was 12 years old. I've never skied in that part of the harbor. It's too busy. It's unsafe. We'd go someplace else. I think it's definitely a, something that has some merit. I was parked out by the gas dock for two years. Saw the mayhem out there, three, four-foot waves, people trying to fuel their boats. I've read the reports. There wasn't a lot of damage done, but there certainly is damage done that doesn't get reported. So I think you need to keep that in in consideration. There are times when we're not running to the police officers that things got broken and pushed away, cleats taken care of. There's no reason for it, but I guess the reason would be that there is some documentation. So maybe that's our folks should do a little bit better job at, at that documentation. So while our local officers have stated there's not a lot of things on record, there is a lot of things that happen and that aren't on record that happened there and people just move on. So I think it's worth some consideration to look into those that propose that's out there. That's what we have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else in the room?
My name is Kyle Worth. I represent Sergeant Marina and all the owners. Unfortunately, the original person who started with the letter has passed away. So I'm now picking up the battle, if you will. I realize that the sheriff's office says that they don't have the funding to patrol this area the whole time. Right now, we're not getting extra patrols or anything. We're not looking for a temporary, because you, once you go temporary, it's very hard to go back. We're looking for a permanent resolution to this. Even shortening the full wake area, because right now we have boats just circling in front of our fuel dock. The boats will go up four to five feet. I've had one broken leg already. They did not report it. They didn't feel, they felt it was their problem and not ours or the, the others. So most of the owners don't feel that they should call 911, wrap up the very few sheriffs that we do have here in town. So they just kind of take it, complain to other boaters, complain to me, and kind of move on. There is, like Kevin has said, there is damage that just goes unreported. So it is, it's a, for us, it's a huge safety issue for myself and my crew also. I tell them not to put their feet or anything in between the boats anymore because it's just that somebody's going to get really hurt from it. So even if you move the, the boys out 100 feet, that would help out tremendously. So that's what we're looking for. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Quick. Let us share some thoughts about the short-term rental. So we want to make our house, our primary residence, will only rent it July, August. And our attorney said you need to put it in your trust. But now I hear, even though the short-term rentals are my husband and I's name, putting it in the trust, they said would be a change of ownership. So he's concerned and said, please share that with whoever is making these decisions because I don't want my primary residence not to be part of my family trust. So, and, and the other thing is, I'm sure other people have life changes that may require them to make trust decisions, you know, divorces or deaths. So I think we, I think the spirit of the short-term rental is not transferring it maybe to others, and that can easily be accomplished on a dent of note on any change of ownership would be my suggestion. So anyways, thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Luffler. I have a short-term rental on 135 Grant Street. With that being said, trade, just a little timeline, we did send out an email to all the group here. And then we sent out a second one and then Mayor Anderson got back to us after that saying that we had this opportunity to speak tonight. We came up on Sagatuck, we live in Illinois, on January 3rd. Checked our mailbox and sure enough in there was City of Sagatuck with some information about new ordinance, ordinances as well as a website to go and check to see what we did. Our renewal was up January 4th. At that point in time, Tracy basically freaked out, went online, went to the website, tried to renew online, but was unable to. After that, we sent Luke Thompson an email as well as called him. He got back to us on that following Tuesday. Talked to Tracy and the following day I talked to Luke as well, seeing if there was anything that could be done. And he said that basically there wasn't, his hands were tied. As a result of that, that is why I am up here. Following, following that, we decided that we've, we've been, we've been short-term rental property owners since, for nine years right now. And then within that nine years, we've never had any problems with our guests. Starry Night Cottage on 135 Grant Street. Never needed any police to come. Our neighbors have been very well-received. We get along with our neighbors, our guests usually who are 40 years or older, usually with pets, like the quiet neighborhood, and then they can walk downtown. It's about a 10-minute walk, which is really a good thing. As well as that, we invested, we put investments back into our house and we put in a new bathroom, put in a cedar, new cedar fence, changed some windows as well as that. We also zoning out right now. However, it's very important to our family economically. We give our guests, I think, a really great value as a result of that. We have brochures in the house. That's the first thing they see. We tell businesses, we talk about businesses, tell them the restaurants to go to, other activities they can go to. We talk great about Sagatuck. My son just went to, my son and his, our future daughter-in-law just went to gosh, Belt Mansion, and hopefully that will be a wedding venue in 2027. And we also, Tracy and I also seriously talked about retiring here when we reached that age. Anyways, I guess that's time and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Hi, my name is Connie. We're going to talk, um, I'm here to talk about short-term rentals as well.
And can you tell us where you live?
Uh, yes, we own two properties here in Sagatuck. We have, my husband and I have a condo at Sagatuck Harbors Number Four, and we also own 304 Lucy House, currently a rental. We have had it for over 10 years with my parents and they've gotten older. We decided to put it in an LLC, kind of a similar thing that what I'm hearing. And back then, it was a three-year, the license was three, three years. So it was still, and we did this before the law changed. So then, and, and we rent it with Belavita Rentals. So Kevin has been very instrumental helping us through this process with the switching over. So we just submitted for a new license and we were denied because they said it was a change of ownership when it actually was just, we put it in an LLC, just like for protection. And, and we're very concerned because this will really mess us up if we cannot rent the place anymore. We've been renting it for over 10 years. So another, I, I don't have all the terminology that gentlemen said it perfect, but I just wanted to reinforce with, with our case too, because we're, we, I've been, I grew up here in this town since, since 1972. My parents had a boat at Singapore and we, we love this town. Our whole family comes, like I said, we, we own a place here and we, we would like to continue with our rental. So hopefully you'll take that into consideration and with everybody else.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Anyone else in the room? Okay, uh, anyone online, if you'll raise your Zoom hand? You see any, Jane? Ah, yes, okay. Tracy.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. I'm just going to reiterate what, what Tim was saying and we, we unfortunately, yeah, we're from 135 Grant Street. And we've had this rental for about 10 years and just love coming up. We've been coming up like for years before that and we're able to finally purchase a place. And where we made our error was we, we found this letter in our, in our mail. But I, it didn't, it didn't say that we, our license was expiring. We thought it was going to be like in February because that's when the fire department had come out last, last to, you know, inspect our house. And I just scanned it and I looked it up because I know it is our responsibility and it was expiring right then. We did go back and we looked and looked and we've had so, like, we do get, I, I know it's not, you know, most people do, we get about at least 100 emails a day. I'm a teacher just from work and from other things. And our, when looking back, we did have an email back in August, but it just, the heading was just STRs. And we get so many emails about, you know, STR, you know, information or it could be an advertisement. So, you know, that was our fault. We did not see it, but we did not get a letter. So we were just really kind of, I mean, this is our livelihood. We are trying to get close to retirement where we can come up and, and just stay full-time also. And just knowing if there's any grace for that. I mean, we are human. We didn't get anything in the mail. I know times have changed. I know when we were renewing over COVID times, I kept calling and it was like, oh, don't worry, don't worry, you know, and I know that's totally unprecedented, but it, it just really took us and we, it wasn't like it was a month later or two months later. It was right on the day before, but it was the weekend. So just wondering if there was, you know, anything anybody could do because it really does affect our livelihood and I mean, we just love coming and, and it really will affect us. So I just wanted us to be heard, but thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
And can I just say one more thing? I just have a minute left, ever like a little bit left. I do agree with those LLC. Uh, you know, people also, I mean, it would just, you know, they need to do what's best for their family and, and I, I would just agree. I just want to say that out there too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Anyone else online? Okay, any, oh, yes, uh, I, I can't, Christine? You're on mute. You should be good now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, 449 Water Street, 121 Mary Street, Christine Murphy Pierce. I'm on the agenda for a special parade slash event for a tent to be put up for St. Patrick's Day Pub Crawl on the 15th, that Saturday. Um, I'm pretty sure all the information is covered in your packet, so I won't take up too much of your time when it comes to that. Um, I know that the safety issue is the most important. I did have a meeting with the Parks and Recreation and with Ryan, with Ryan, and then I also had a meeting with the fire chief and he recommended some things and I think we kind of agreed on how to do it safely. Lots of barricades, all that stuff. And it's more or less, the purpose of it is in the past, uh, the pub crawl starts at Wix and it ends at Wix. And in between that time, anywhere between, I would say, 300 people are signed up for it. So figure between 300 and maybe 500 people we have going in and out, either at Wix or throughout town. So it's kind of like an overflow is the way I'm looking at it. Just to safely have people be there and not in the street. It is in the social district. Um, so it was, it's just an idea to maybe even try to be able to do these kinds of events in the future, to bring more people into the, the, you know, the shoulder seasons is what we call it when we don't really have any business. So it was just an idea. Happy if it gets approved. Obviously, if it snows, we will not put a tent up. But yep, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
Anyone else on Zoom? Last chance for anybody in the room? Okay, we will close public comment and move to discussion item 6A. Ordinance, the Bed and Breakfast Zoning Text Amendment. Ryan, you have anything before Luke takes it up?
No, Madam Mary. Good evening, or sorry, good afternoon, Council. Yeah, we'll turn it over to Luke Thompson if that's okay.
Hello. All right. So the first thing that I'm presenting to you guys tonight is a text amendment to allow for the incorporation of accessory guest buildings for B&Bs within the CER district. The proposal would allow a B&B to build or convert existing accessory structures for habitation by special land use. And the proposal was in front of the Planning Commission for a number of months and after a lot of discussion regarding restrictions on the amount of buildings, restrictions on the amount of units inside the buildings, and a presentation on how it would impact the area, given very nicely by Chris here. It was unanimously recommended for approval. So obviously everything is in your packet. It's a lot to unpack there. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Chris? I have one on page six, under 10I. Accessory guest, accessory guest buildings shall not be considered accessory dwelling units as defined and shall not be subject to the requirements of Section 155.022. Can you explain what that means specifically?
Oh, accessory dwelling units have standards for, to be able to rent, you have to do.
As a short-term rental, pretty much.
This wouldn't be an accessory dwelling unit and it wouldn't be subject to any standards that accessory dwelling units are subject to. These are, it's a completely separate thing.
Okay. And how, how will it differ between if I'm, I'm looking at the, the properties, there's two on, on the Wickwood property and then they also purchased the house next to that. Is that part of, is that going to be part of this amendment too?
Potentially in the future, they could look at combining the parcels. I know it's sort of up in the air at the minute as to what they'd like to do, but it, it is certainly a possibility.
Okay, but that's not part of this, right?
No, no, no. I mean, so this, this is a text amendment to allow for accessory guest buildings. And it is a private text amendment, so it was brought to us by that establishment. But for them to actually be able to convert, the 120 Mary, I think is the address, for them to actually convert it, they'd have to take it to the Planning Commission. They'd have to go through the special land use procedure before anything was to happen there. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Russ?
Yeah, Madam Mary, thank you. Luke, good afternoon. So just to make sure I'm clear, and I was at that planning commission meeting where this was discussed. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear that the intent of this is not being driven by an individual property that may benefit from this, depending on what plans they make as opposed to the larger benefit for the community.
Yeah. So, I mean, this.
Does that make sense what I'm asking?
It makes sense completely. Of course, this was brought to us privately. But it did, you know, go through months of planning, the Planning Commission discussion, and we did kind of consider whether it would really only benefit this one establishment or if it would be a benefit. And those items were discussed and I think considered before they recommended approval. So I think they, they thought that in general, this does make sense in, in the CER district.
Maybe, maybe our representative to the planning commission, maybe Mr. Clark might be able to maybe even weigh in on that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think I just, I would just echo Luke's response. I mean, the first thing the planning commission did was take us, okay, let's take a step back and let's look at this broadly across the town and as we're deliberating and making considerations regarding potential changes to the ordinance. You know, let's look at the big, let's look at the big picture. Let's not just look at this in terms of making changes that just benefit one particular business. So, you know, we did, you know, we did go back and forth a little bit on, you know, does it make sense? And I think I mentioned this in our last meeting. Does it make sense to have two structures? I think what the limits are, no more than two structures, no more than three rooms per structure with the maximum not to exceed 50% of the rooms in the main. So we went, you know, back and forth and, you know, are those the right numbers or not? And, you know, did as much analysis as we could, but really what it comes down to is, um, it was, it was requested that we consider the two and the three. And so we thought let's, you know, there's no reason not to do it. Let's give it a try and let's see how it works out for, you know, the, the city in at large. And if we need to, we can make adjustments down the road. I don't know. Does that answer your, your question?
Yeah, it does. And, and there was some sensitivity around this issue at the meeting regarding the exact issue that I'm asking about, and that's benefiting one individual property to, I mean, that's not the best word to use, but, but allowing a situation to occur that gives them more flexibility, whereas planning, in my experience as a former planning commissioner, is that we're very specific about the greater benefit of a change and change is only made when it's deemed to be responsible from a planning standpoint, as well as benefiting the larger community and the district.
Right.
Which I, which I think this has gotten to that point. I mean, that has been the driver behind it. I just want to make sure that that.
It did become part of the discussion. In fact, there was an analysis done of how this regulation would impact all the BMB properties, you know, especially in the R4 district. So it was considered and not just looked at as just one, one potential business. In fact, in the last meeting, I mean, just probably had some people who wanted to throw darts at my picture, right? I brought it back up saying, we don't want to make, we want to ensure that we don't get into a situation where we're creating an unfair advantage for one business versus another. So.
So there's, are there similar instances of this throughout the city, but in different districts? So like on Lake Street, for example, there's quite a few examples of like the Sagatuck Hotel, for example, has those outbuildings that are part of the inn.
Right.
Is that, you know, is that similar?
That's kind of what you're talking about.
Is that allowed, you know, it, it, you're just making it so it's available in that district where it's available in other districts already.
No.
I'm just asking.
As of right now, it's, it's not, a BMB is, is a singular structure. It's a residential structure and it's singular. You, you, if you were building a fresh one, by our regulations right now, you can build one. This would allow you to build a BMB with an accessory building that you're allowed to also, you know, you can, you can rent the rooms in the accessory buildings too. So what exists right now, it, it most likely, I mean, the city itself is very old, so there's plenty of non-conformity around. So I can't speak to the specific properties you were talking about, but.
But it's similar, right? I mean, it's a similar situation.
And.
And that was just allowed in that district before on Lake Street?
Yeah. It, it was not allowed.
Okay.
And what I, I mean, unless it was done way in the past, it's not allowed now in the current, current ordinances that we have.
Okay.
And they, they have, they have four of them, right? I think.
At least.
At least four of them. That, that's what I'm thinking. So likely that, that would be grandfathered in.
And I don't know what the use to that structure is. I mean, I don't know whether it's a, a BMB or a motor court or a hotel.
There are rooms with bathrooms. That's, they don't have cooking facilities. I know I've taken a tour of that when they first opened them.
Sure. Yeah, there's, there's plenty of.
Just want it to be, you know, as long as, you know, we're changing it for one district. Is it any changes needed for other districts or just not needed, grandfathered in?
Yeah, well, that, that point was. Yeah, well, that, that point was raised, too. I think Bobby raised that point that, you know, so we are recommended, recommending approval for this district, and we think that we should bring this back and consider this where B and Bs are permitted.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you for clarifying it.
Step one, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. Chris? A follow-up to what, to what Councilmember Clark said. You said an analysis was done of the other B and Bs. What, what did that analysis show?
So. If you, if you'd like to talk about it, Chris, I'd love for you to talk about it.
I think it'd be, I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For those I don't know, my name is Chris Corey, and we've worked for the city before at McKenna. But in this case, we are working on behalf of Wickwood Inn on this particular amendment. Just to understand who I'm representing. We did do an analysis. There are 32 parcels in the C E R district. Because bed and breakfasts are a permitted land use, any of them conceivably could become a bed and breakfast. That's not likely that all of them will, but any of them could. And our analysis concluded that of the 32 parcels, 24 of them could, if they became bed and breakfasts, accommodate accessory guest units and meet all of the requirements. Now, they'd all have to be approved for special use permits, which of course is discretionary, but they could meet all of the objective requirements on their lot, 24 of the 32. Apologize. And then in our analysis, we also looked at how many guest rooms you could have on each parcel, because the limit in the, in the ordinance is six or 50% of the rooms in the bed and breakfast itself. And those numbers, by the way, have been agreed upon by Wickwood Inn. Wickwood Inn has no objection to those limits. And we found that for most parcels, actually 30 out of the 32, would be unable to get to the full six, regardless of how many units they could fit in the main building. They simply wouldn't be able to build a building big enough to fit six accessory guest units. The vast majority would either have three or four. Actually, I take that back. The vast majority of two or three as their limit on guest dwelling units. So this does open an opportunity for other parcels in the, in the district, the 23 or guess 22 other parcels that Wickwood doesn't own. But not to the point where you're talking in, in extreme buildout of something like this. At, at, speaking of which, the absolute maximum buildout of accessory guest units, if all 32 parcels became bed and breakfasts, for some reason, and all of them built all the accessory guest units they could possibly build under this ordinance, you'd get 76 new guest rooms. So that gives you the order of magnitude that we're talking about here. Our contention is that this is a benefit to the whole city because it does give you an opportunity to expand your hospitality, your hospitality capacity without changing the character. Obviously, 76 is unlikely to happen, but you could get a couple of dozen new guest rooms without removing any homes, without building a large hotel, or anything like that. They would simply be in the backyard in an accessory structure, and it couldn't be seen from the street, for the most part. So that's, I guess, our pitch in favor of it. And I can ask, answer any further questions as they come up?
No, that was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Russ?
Oh, yeah, just another comment. So as we were talking about this, a thought comes to mind in terms of conversations this council has had over the past several years, and short-term rentals has been just the topic, right? When it comes to safe accommodations, as well as community needs for visitors. But I start to think about B and Bs, which, this is a B and B, and then I start thinking about some of the other properties in town, like Hotel Sagatuck, Ship and Shore, which classified, I'm pretty sure classified as a hotel slash motel. Then you have, you know, Twin Oaks, for instance, is that a bed and breakfast?
Yes.
You know, so, so anyway, where I'm going with this is I think it's important for us to understand exactly how properties are being classified. And so thank you for the information, because that's applicable only to B and Bs. But where I'm going with this is that I think we need to start thinking about, okay, what are the other options that some of these other properties may have? Because they may be coming back to us and saying, I'm classified as a motel, but I have, for instance, Hotel Sagatuck, I don't know if it's classified as a hotel or B and B, I don't know. But that then takes the conversation, say, well, I've got four accessory buildings, am I eligible? Because I'm not a B and B, but am I eligible? Because this speaks specifically to B and Bs.
Good point.
Yeah. Would it be for something that's considered an inn, a hotel, a motor lodge?
But do we have, but do we have that describes what, what is a bed and breakfast? Is there, yeah, that very good point.
There, there is.
Yeah, we, we have definitions for those things, obviously. I see, I see your point is that sometimes the line is quite thin. You know, but for the most part, it's going to be a case-by-case basis on if the use isn't clear, it's going to be going back and finding old records and seeing what was actually, you know, asked for when it was built. Or, yeah, it's, it's a tough question.
Yeah, I think it's just from, from a point of clarity for the city. I think we would want to know for those places that are accommodating visitors, except for short-term rentals, which are pretty, pretty clear, what exactly are they classified as?
Well, we have, yeah.
You know, what, what is a B and B?
And also, you know, on the other hand, you know, somebody that has a regular, you know, S T R right now, maybe they can start classifying themselves instead of B and B, you know, I mean.
That, that would be tough.
I mean, do they just have to make breakfast in the morning, or, you know?
There's, there's plenty of other.
Okay, other factors that, okay.
It's not a criticism.
Yeah, I, I don't know what that is. I agree with that.
Yeah, it's one at a time.
Yeah, these conversations just kind of reveal some things that maybe we need to think about, and this has got me thinking about this.
Madam Mayor. I see Mr. Woody was kind of leaning forward, like he might have something to add, maybe.
Speak to, to some of Russ's questions. So when you get into the realm of non-conforming uses, a lot of these, you know, their, their uses that predated the zoning ordinance, and so they might not neatly fit into the definitions that have been adopted subsequently. And there's not really a need for the city to, like, fit them into one of those containers that they don't perfectly match, so long as the non-conforming use continues. So let's say you have four accessory rental units, it's some kind of rental operation that doesn't really fit into the definitions under the city code. If they want to expand that, the only way to do it is through a variance from the Z B A to expand their non-conforming use.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Woody, for that. I think it's important for us to get some clarity around the accommodations that we have in town, how they currently, whether they're, you know, legacy, you know, uses, or whether they're new uses, just so we have a great understanding. I know Mr. Thompson's, you know, fairly new to his position, so still learning the community, I think that would be important for us to know.
I think if we, we, we all have the, our access to the zoning ordinances that have all of the definitions. So for those who haven't read those recently, it's helpful to understand the difference between B and Bs and hotels. And, and when we did the waterfront property ordinance, a lot of that came up. And it's, you know, it's pretty technical and detailed, but probably worth a, a scan through periodically to refresh ourselves.
Anything else? All right. Luke, any final thoughts before you?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Just one more thing, but the ordinance we're talking about, that's on our website as well, for people that are watching, and they, they have these questions as well. I just want to remind them that.
Yeah, and as well as our zoning map, which shows all the different zones. So that's, it's, it's very helpful. And the, the glossary, I mean, we define all these, it's, it's very handy, so. Okay, that takes us to 6B, Short-Term Rental Implementation and Enforcement Report. Brian, anything you want to say before Luke?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll kick it off, Mayor, and we'll, we're gonna kind of, Luke and Mr. Woody and I are gonna kind of share the presentation of this particular item to the council, and I'll be, be available to answer your questions. So, so we'll go back to 2023, early 2023, and, and there were some discussions with the Planning Commission and the council, and a decision made to, to form a short-term rental task force. And, and that group met over several meetings over the summer of, of 2023, and ultimately that fall recommended several items to you related to short-term rentals, and some updates that you might consider for your ordinances, and ways to improve our short-term, short-term rental regulations to really strike that right balance between, you know, wanting visitors to come, wanting visitors to have a, have a good time and have a good experience, but also recognizing that a lot of our short-term rentals are in residential neighborhoods, and, and trying to, you know, find the, the right balance, and, and dealing with those more nuisance issues, right? Parking, noise, occupancy, you know, those types of things. So since that time, you know, you all certainly were, were hard at work, and your planning commissioners were hard at work, and, and coming up with a number of changes to your regulations that align with those recommendations. And so what we've done is, is taken all the short-term rental task, short-term rental task force recommendations, and kind of laid them out in a chart to kind of provide you with a status report of, of where we're at. And I'm not going to go through them one by one. We have it in your meeting packet. I, I, I trust all of you read that. But essentially, nearly all of the short-term rental task force recommendations have been implemented at this point. Since we've implemented the, the changes, there's been a few questions that have come up about transfers, and whether or not there should be any sort of exceptions if folks are applying late. And then we've also heard some questions from council members about whether or not there should be some sort of, like, appeals process or different way of handling those types of issues. So in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Woody to kind of present his findings on that. Before we get there, maybe we'll touch on just kind of where we're at with our, our latest lottery, and then what enforcement looked like last year, knowing that really a lot of our enforcement tools are just, you know, it was the fall before we really got all of them in place. And really, this is going to be the first full summer that we're actually going in with, with all of them in place. So let Mr. Thompson touch on the lottery and enforcement.
Interrupt, Chris, Chris, just quickly, since we're getting into short-term rentals.
Yes.
So I just, I want to acknowledge, and sorry to interrupt you, Luke. Chris led the team from McKenna, who did the consulting with the Short-Term Rental Task Force. So, and the report that we all have, he referred to, I spent time with that report today. So, Chris, thank you for you and your colleagues' contribution.
Of course.
And I just wanted to snag and acknowledge you before you ducked out.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good shout. So good to see you, Chris, so, all right.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Obviously, we have implemented a few new policies and procedures in regards to short-term rentals. The 24-hour hotline's been instrumental in ensuring appropriate enforcement action is taken with regards to short-term rentals. Obviously, not a lot of, not a lot of action around here right now. We're in the, you know, off-season, but that's going to pick up pretty quick and hard in the spring, I'm sure. One of the things that we did at the end of last year was we ran some end-of-year numbers to see where we were in regards to the caps and see if there were any available licenses. We identified that there were two licenses available in Peninsula South, and two licenses available in Peninsula North Riverside. So we went through the process outlined in our lottery regulations. I forget the term, but essentially, we provided public notice to let everybody know that there were these licenses available. And if you're in that district, you could apply within this certain timeframe. The timeframe is, is over now, ended February 20th. We didn't receive any applications for either of those districts. I did receive some correspondence from an owner who was interested, but who was halfway through a pretty large renovation of their property and would simply not meet the fire department standards. So. But, yeah. One of the hot topics right now is obviously transfers and, and what constitutes a transfer, or, or how are we tracking those? And, and there's a lot of questions around it. As of right now, I renew, or I review, sorry, all incoming property transfer affidavits and cross-reference them against our short-term rental registry, just to see if there is a conflict there. And there have been, there have been none that I have seen since I've been receiving property transfer affidavits, because most of the transfers that have occurred, whether it be from an owner to their own LLC, or someone to a family member, or one of the beneficiaries in a trust changed. These have occurred largely prior to, to me coming on the scene. So I haven't seen any property transfer affidavits, but I have ran a couple of reports to identify potential issues, which has raised some questions, obviously. I have ran a report to identify short-term rentals, which have transferred ownership in some way since receiving their last license, and identified 15 potential transfers of the 15.
Say 50 or 15?
15, 15. Of the 15, nine are in our community residential district, four are in Peninsula West, one is in Peninsula North Duneside, and one is in Peninsula South. So obviously, when a, a lot of people have applied for their license, moving from a certificate to a license, they have been met with an inability to renew. They're not renewing, they're getting a license they were on a certificate. But that in itself has what's raised a couple of questions that have sort of sparked the discussion topic tonight. So. So we.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, clarification, of the 15 that came out, then, then none of them were able to get a short-term residential?
So the 15 are, are certificate holders who have some form of transfer of ownership since they were issued their certificate. I, I got a certificate to rent my property in 2022, it's a three-year rental, it's coming up for renewal soon. And in 2024, I transferred it. So, yeah. Essentially, that is the case, yeah.
And it will be. And so what we've done is we've kind of, you know, been awaiting this meeting and this discussion with the council before taking more, more, more formal enforcement action. And so probably be a good time to turn it over to Mr. Woody to kind of present on maybe some of the questions that the council's asked us to bring some options forth on for your consideration, and then we can go from there.
Sure. So we prepared the public report that's in your packet. And there's three issues that it discusses, the first among them being transfers. And so as Luke was indicating, there's, you know, these kind of transfers that have taken place, you know, maybe within the last three years or so, that were in relation to property that's subject to a short-term rental certificate. So that would have been granted under the city's old regulations. That's kind of one bucket of the transfers that we're talking about. And then it, it's also been raised, and I think there's been some discussion of this before the council in the past, but I mean, this is something that's kind of always topical, is transfers, you know, new transfers moving forward, whether it's of a certificate that hasn't yet expired, or of a license that's valid in effect, you know, say, between an individual and a trust or an LLC, or something like that. So under the city's previous and current regulations, short-term rental certificates and licenses were not and have never been transferable. The old short-term rental regulations in the city's zoning ordinance just basically said that a, a short-term rental certificate is valid until there is a change of ownership, and that was the only thing it said. And then, given that short-term rental properties are often held by a variety of entities, when we implemented the short-term rental licensing ordinance, we spelled out a lot of different scenarios that were examples of this is an unauthorized transfer. But under the old regulations, the new regulations, there's no sort of transfer that's permitted. And the only way that changes is by action of the council. It's largely a policy decision. So the report goes through, and I hope that all of you have read it, but if you'd like me to kind of summarize some of the high points, I'm happy to. But we, we, we just kind of list the possible reasons, and I, and I would say it's a, not an exhaustive list, but the possible reasons for and against allowing certain kinds of transfers. And so I don't know if there's any specific questions there. I think.
I guess, if I could ask, just under Alex Weir's letter, if you guys could go to page 94. He spells out three transfers, and just under Michigan law, I would love for you to just, you know, let us know your thoughts.
And that is something that I've looked at. So, and I think it's an interesting point, and it, and it probably highlights that the state has recognized that there are policy considerations for allowing certain kinds of transfers. But the language that we're looking at isn't a state statute, it's in the city code.
Okay.
And if there was, you know, Michigan case law out there, maybe a, an opinion from the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court saying that this is exactly what that phrase, if it isn't defined, means, maybe that could have some bearing on how the city interprets its own zoning ordinance. But the meaning that is provided in different statutes is. provided in different statutes is not going to be controlling as to what the words of the city code means. And I mean, a lot of the, I, I think at least two of the statutes that were cited in that letter, they actually carve out quite a few exceptions for things that they don't call a transfer of ownership. So a, a conveyance to an immediate family member, a, I, I think inheritance, things that, you know, are, are very much, you know, would otherwise constitute a, a change of ownership under the city code. But those are exceptions to those laws that have been carved out by the state legislature.
And one, I'm going to make a quick point, Russ. One thing that I think is worth noting, I've looked at the old application for the short-term rental certificate, and it does, there are only, you know, when you applied, there were 10 points that were on the application and number eight was just saying unless they're that you couldn't change ownership. So it was, I mean, we were explicit even on the application form.
Right. I, I, I agree. And, and it's also consistent with, with how city staff has administered the ordinance and encountering this anytime. I mean, the, the name of the ownership of the property changes, you know, accomplished via deed, that's a change in ownership. And so I think it would be kind of a stretch to read in exceptions to the, the plain language of the city code that aren't there.
Russ, you had a point or question or point?
Yeah. So reading on, under transfers, your highlighted point, unless there's a change of ownership for the subject parcel, which had been the law of the city for a number of years. I, you know, again, just looking back, when there was not a cap on rentals, this was appropriate because when you changed ownership, no matter what the ownership, whether it was a conveyance or whatever, you just applied for a new certificate. It was that simple, right? But now that there's a cap, that changes the whole game. And this has been, this, this particular issue we're discussing right now, especially with transfers, was brought up repeatedly during the process to get to the ordinance. And I know several council members that are at this table today had concerns about the language. I'm one of them. I think we should find an equitable way to work with conveyance of property to a family. We should, the, other communities in this country have done this repeatedly. This, this is a consideration that other communities have done. Why we didn't get it done during the process, that's just the way it worked. But now's our chance to correct that. Because I think there are going to be constant situations with generational changes. Properties are going to convey to another family. There's tax reasons to go to an LLC. I mean, all the reasons are, are known. We need to make the ordinance fit what our community reflects in terms of how ownership may change. Now, for property changes, ownership to another company or to another person outside of that family, then I believe we have another different situation which this would address.
Sure. Yeah. And, and some of those same reasons that you identified are, are in the report that we prepared. Because we go through, I mean, there's, there's reasons against it, there's reasons for it. I think there's strong rationale on both sides. And at the, the end of the day, you know, we, we started with a, a very rigid set of controls on transfers. And, and I do think that maybe some of the intent was to, to look at this later on and see if there's exceptions that should be carved at where at later on. So.
What are you going to say?
Well, yeah, a few things. You know, I'd be concerned, I'd like your view on, you know, if we change the ordinance in a significant way, if it creates a loophole, weakens or dilutes the ordinance. My follow-on to that is, is for you to explore this a little bit more on the role for potentially an appeals process through the ZBA. Because I've always said that, you know, we want to avoid unintended consequences. We do want to have a mechanism for unique situations. And I think, you know, we found a few unique situations. But I'm very mindful of diluting the ordinance, diminishing the policy, weakening it in any way with some sort of, you know, called a loophole or not, that, that could create, you know, just a flood of this, of, of these types of situations, saying, well, if you did it for them, why, why aren't you going to do it for me? And so I'd like you to explore this a little bit on why you think the ZBA is or is not an appropriate sort of almost Supreme Court level appeal process that these unique cases could be studied by our.
So and in the, in the
Go ahead.
context of the report, the discussion of the ZBA was not necessarily, so when you say like sitting as a Supreme Court to, to administer these unusual circumstances, what I'm understanding is that you're contemplating something that's almost, it's not necessarily an appeal of an enforcement decision saying there were, were not, you know, good reasons to revoke or suspend an STR license. You're saying that because of a unusual set of circumstances, someone should be granted a, a waiver or an excuse from the general requirements of the STR licensing ordinance?
That's kind of what I'm thinking is to be, you know, with these really unusual situations, you know, if, if the ZBA is equipped or if it's, if it's even appropriate for them to take these things on. I just, I'm concerned about, you know, doing a few here at the council level for these transfers, then suddenly we have a flood of them because we've created this loophole in the, in.
Well, and I think, I mean, to the extent you're concerned about a loophole, a lot of, I mean, I think first the council has to kind of dial in what kinds of transfers, if any, it wants to permit. And, and I think maybe the underlying policy reasons for that and, and give some thought to the ramifications of, okay, if we permit this, what are going to be the consequences? And there's, I, I mean, I think there's ways that we can very narrowly tailor exceptions to the general rules on transfers. If the city is, is thinking, well, we only want these really narrow situations to allow a, a, a transfer. We can build in, I mean, if the, if the council wants to, we can build in a waiver process. And we can also allow some kind of discretionary decision because, you know, in recognition of the fact that, you know, Sagatuck is a very old community that's had a lot of rental uses for a long time. And then layering on the fact that the short-term rental licenses and certificates are held by different kinds of entities. You know, we can add some, if the city is interested in it, you know, some, some, I guess, more discretionary or waiver language that would say, you know, someone is able to determine if the essence of this transfer fits what the purpose of the exception that the city is carving out. But it really depends on, on what kind of transfer, if any, the city wants to allow. And then I think the, the rest of those little details will fill themselves in. And, and, and I can talk more about the, the ZBA as to whether they, they can hear appeals and whether they should and what the value of that would be later when we get to that.
Joe or Gregory, do you have any?
I just, well, hearing that there are these folks here and then there's another 15, gosh, I sound awfully loud.
I know.
Louder than usual. No, but it just, I mean, with 15 more coming that, that these already discovered turning in the, into an LLC, what it seems like folks are doing, it doesn't seem as narrow, you know, or specialized, you know? It seems like there's quite a few folks. And, you know, just wondering if, if we did have, had, had a process, you know, it would be, it, it would be something that would cover everything, you know, anyone that would change, I would think, their property into an LLC. So it wouldn't, I, I'm not seeing it as we would have a one-by-one case, you know, if we'd created an ordinance that covered this particular issue. Because it seems like, like I said, you've got 15 that you found on top of these folks here. It seems like it's, it's going to continue or it will be an issue.
Joe?
Yeah, I guess fundamentally, I think, I don't, I think looking at our ordinance, going through continuous improvement, trying to make it better, suit our committees, community is the right thing to do. I shy away from, you know, carve-outs that say, well, there's going to be an exception process and to your point, a Supreme Court or whatever. Because I just think that every situation is going to require a review. So I, you know, I would much rather focus in on, we want to make some changes to our ordinance because it's the right thing to do. And, you know, not just to pick one out of the air, but, you know, I look at the situation where single, single payer LLC, right, which is essentially meaning if you're the IRS, it's the same social security number as the individual that has the owner. To me, that's not a change of control and it's not a change of ownership. So if there's a carve-out for that, I'm, to me, it meets the spirit of how we've kind of created the original ordinance. However, and I'll throw this out, and this is where I think we need legal support as we kind of frame out, you know, what we think is right and what we're willing to accept. We don't want to get into a situation though where, you, you know, we pave a way for something being moved to us, whether it's a single owner LLC or whatever, and then that LLC being acquired or transferred, right, that ownership transfers. So there has to be protections, you know, so that it doesn't balloon out and we have the unintended consequences. So.
And, and I, I think for our part, so what'll probably be most valuable for city staff is to have a general idea of the direction that the council wants to go and, and the, you know, just, just the, the, the broad statement of the kinds of transfers, again, if any, that the council wants to enable. And then I think developing that through city staff and going through the exercise of thinking, you know, okay, how does this work for a single owner LLC? What about a, a partnership? What about a trust? So on and so forth. That can all be dialed in and, and a lot of thought and effort can be put into thinking about the, the potential loopholes, if any. And then that'll be provided to the council in a much more, yeah, complete format, if that's the direction we want.
Madam Mayor, first I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda because I think this is a, a very important discussion to have and keep updating it. And I appreciated Councilmember Clark's idea about, let's try to make this in the best interest for the community. And I have been a, a big proponent of generational transfers. And again, there are a lot of nuances there. And you talked about before it was a rigid transfer that, well, that's because it was no big deal. You know, you changed it, you just went in and you, there wasn't anybody else to, to say, oh, no, you can't do that. That's a transfer. And so I'm, I'm pleased to look forward to some way of defining that. I'm a strong supporter of allowing generational, whether it's LLC trust or something, but narrow it so that there's no loophole. Narrow it so that it doesn't suddenly open everything up. I mean, that battle's been fought. Let's not bring that up again. Let's just make sure that, that we're not being mean spirited, that it's, it's somebody that's had a place for 10 years and, and now they want to put it into a trust and suddenly they're going to lose it. Those 15 people just found out that what they've done in their estate planning or everything else, gone.
Yeah. And I, and I do think those are two separate issues. If we're talking about transfers, like, you know, to a, a single entity LLC, and then what you're talking about is, is generational transfers, that's, that's a separate issue is, okay, can someone put their, their short-term rental into some form of corporate ownership versus, you know, can someone convey their short-term rental license to their kids, to their spouse, so on and so forth?
Thank you, Russ.
Yeah, I would, I just want to make a comment about all of this. I'm not sensing any opposition to this thought.
I haven't spoken yet.
I haven't heard any opposition to this. I've heard several comments this evening, as well as people I've talked with in the community, that this is a situation that we need to figure out how to work our way through from an equitable standpoint and respective of the community and the changes that take place. I would say there's two things. One is, as I mentioned earlier, many communities have dealt with this that have short-term rental ordinances. I would encourage if we go down this route that we have, they, he calls some other communities. And they've already been down this road. We're not blazing a new path here.
No, I've, I've implemented
Yeah.
transfer restrictions like this.
Yeah, thank you.
Or exceptions like this for other communities.
And two, and probably the more acute issue is that we have several people in the audience this evening and online that are in a, a very difficult situation at the moment that cannot get a certificate and have made plans because of the lack of clarity here or the, or the way to do this. They're in a, they're in limbo. So this cannot be something that in my opinion, if we decide to move forward, this can linger. It needs to be addressed.
So I, I'm going to speak briefly. So I, I think we, I do, we do need to separate, as Jake said, generational transfers from, you know, ownership, because they're, they're very different, different questions. When we, you know, talk, I mean, and it's, I think your memo pointed out nicely, the, the intent of the ordinance was to get the number of short-term rental licenses, especially, well, in all districts at a manageable level, 20%. And on the Hill, that's a pretty significant change from where we are now. I, you know, I, I think I can get, wrap my head around if, you know, if I Holly Anderson have a license and I continue to have that as the Holly Anderson Trust or, you know, Holly Anderson LLC with my social security number. So it is always tied to me. I can, I think I can wrap my head around that. I'm, I'm a, I'm a hard no on the generational transfer. There are lots of ways to, if, you know, I had a short-term rental and, well, I'm not a good example because I don't have children. But for someone who has a, a house and wants that, you know, person, their child to have it, the, the child can long-term rent it. The, the, you know, many people have said, well, my kid, my kid couldn't afford the house if they couldn't short-term rent it. Well, arguably they could if they long-term rent it. And that's not the only way for people to make money on a second home. And given, I, I just think if we're, we are really going to make a meaningful dent and I don't think we allow licenses to transfer upon death. And we talked, I mean, we talked about this at great length last year as we were going through the ordinances. And I think, I don't think that's an incremental area we need to tweak where I can see as long as we can word it so that the LLC can't move beyond that person. I'm open to that.
What about if there's a, if that person dies, but there are other members who are part of the LLC?
I think that goes away. I mean, I, I think it belongs to, because that's a change in ownership.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at sort of, I have to look at this in the big picture. I mean, I've got four daughters and certainly, you know, they, they could benefit if, if they got the house and suddenly it was a business. If I had a certificate, I don't. But if I did, I could see the benefit to them. But, you know, I'm, I'm also here, it was voted to sit here because I made a pledge to work to maintain our small-town character and our charm, and that means protecting, protecting our residential neighborhoods. So when I see things like, you know, in the, you know, B and B district, us trying to find ways to create more rooms, that makes sense. And that's, that's consistent with, I think, what the community wants. But I do worry, and that's why I'm still, I'm still on the fence about this, about creating something that creates such a loophole that we never need, we never get to where we need to be on protecting our residential neighborhoods. Because we need people to live here. We need schools and we need full-time residents. I, I firmly believe that. So if I'm going to support anything that creates a mechanism to deal with some of these hardship cases, I think I'll call them hardship cases. I think they're pretty unusual. And if it, if it could be very surgical, that, that I'm willing to have, have more of a discussion. But once again, I'm very concerned about creating a loophole or something that just dilutes what we're trying to do to protect our prime R1 residential neighborhoods.
And the question for Luke, have we, have we lost any licenses on the Hill? Or gone down, any licenses on the Hill?
Yeah, from our, so again, in December, I did a end-of-year. Since then, two.
Okay.
Uh, one, I looked into both of them. I, I believe one is one that I was not able to renew because of the generational transfer. And I think the other one was simply somebody who didn't want to renew. So, yeah.
So we're probably still pretty close to 40% or, I mean, we haven't made a meaningful dent on the number of licenses on the Hill.
Well, the, the cap is 67. We're at 126. So there's a 59 difference. I don't have the exact percentage, but it's, yeah, close to 40%.
So to follow up on that, do we know how many of those people are going to lose it? I mean, if they, is there?
Out of the 15?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out a way to, to word it, to keep it, to be able to say if all of the transfers that have come, all of the people that have come to you to get a new certificate, 15 of them don't qualify.
But that's an ownership change, not a generational transfer, I don't think.
Specifically, it's not that they all came to me. I, I've ran a report to find them. But out of the 15, there are pretty much every single, every single variant of possibility. I, I, I have, you know, LLCs where the beneficiaries, there was four, now there's three. I have generational stuff. There are people transferring into the LLC. There's people who just sold their property. I mean, that one is quite clear.
So a lot of the people now that have just had to, well, I'm trying to figure out how many people there are that just now had to do the recertification under the new ordinance. And then their time is going to come up within three more months, six more months or something like that. Have we actually hit the number of people that have had to come in and ask for a new? three more months, six more months, or something like that. Have we actually hit the number of people that have had to come in and ask for a new certificate? That are out there.
Oh, there's still, no, there's still certificates out there. Yeah.
Every year, though, they're going to have to redo it every year. And if they, if they, uh, maintain the same name, then they can continue to do it. But of those, any?
Well, a transfer would void, uh, license, so, and that's part of the reason why I'm checking all property.
It was just renewing the certificate.
Correct, yeah, assuming they, yeah, yeah.
Well, the certificate is only good for
A year.
Years and then, so the the certificates are granted.
One year, one year.
The certificates.
Certificates.
City's old regulations and zoning ordinance, they're good for three years. At the end, three years, they have to come in and apply for a license under the new regulations and that's good for.
Yearly.
Right.
So it's kind of confusing, but the short term rental certificate is something different than the standard for the short term rental license. The certificate is under the city zoning regulations, the license is under.
What's material is that in either one of those situations, whether it's a license or a certificate, if there's a change of ownership, it terminates the existing certificate or license at that point in time.
The way it's currently written, correct.
But if there's not a change in ownership, then do you, do you renew it?
As long as they meet all the requirements.
But so even under the old certificates, um, a change of, I mean, it was really clear that a change of ownership, the certificate wouldn't transfer. So just.
So what's not clear, though, is the LLC that is
Right.
Exact same person.
Right, and right, exactly. But in terms of like a generational transfer, that wouldn't have been possible under the old certificate.
That's correct, right?
Correct. So that's, this is not a change.
And I would also say that even transferring from from an individual to an LLC, I mean, we don't care.
That was not allowed, right?
Right.
But again, it wasn't an issue at the time because he just simply applied for another.
Right.
Certificate.
So they might have chosen not to do that had, you know, these rules kind of came into place within a certain amount of years that they might have chosen to do the LLC when they didn't know there was going to be a cap.
Correct.
Where it would.
I think that's the case that we were seeing here, yeah.
Something that the council take into consideration when it, as we talk about, do we want an exception for a transfer? Because we do have, I mean, these these 15 individuals, as as Russ keeps on very accurately pointing out, that the the consequences for those transfers were, you know, even though they were under a certificate, and the landscape is different then, the the consequences are very different now. So one thing the council can look at is we're, as we're tailoring a solution here, I think there's kind of two separate questions is, you know, okay, moving forward, do we want to allow these kinds of you know, close transfers to a corporation or a trust prospectively in the future? And then maybe a a different question, if we can't reach a consensus on that, it is, okay, what about the 15 transfers that already happened and should have voided those certificates? Do we want to make an exception for them just in light of the fact that the results of that transfer now are different than they would have been under the previous.
That would be some equity, in my opinion. My answer would be yes.
I think the ones that
Yeah.
Occurred within the last few years when we were making these new ordinances, um, I feel as though there should be an exception for just those.
I I agree.
Under the same name.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, because they didn't know, um, back in the day, when they were deciding to put it into a trust or an LLC, they didn't know that the consequences would be such because we changed the ordinance.
And but I was also.
Forward, I don't know that I would say going forward, we would want to do that, just those that it happened within the timeframe.
It it sort of reminds me a little bit of, you know, you know, we talked about the moratorium. We didn't do the moratorium and it gave folks time to react
Okay.
To what we were doing around S, what what we were deliberating on around STR. So, you know, the moratorium, we wouldn't have gotten as far as we would have probably with with all these, you know, 39 or 40%, whatever it is. But in some respects, it was probably a kinder, gentler way to make sure people kind of had had chance to understand what was being discussed and what was possibly going to happen, so.
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 I, I just, I wouldn't have a problem with going forward, keeping it at an LLC as long as it's under, like you were saying, Holly, under the same, uh, owner management, um, LLC, simply, or, uh, social security number. Um, I just, I feel, um, uh, a lot of folks are doing that, you know, to help with their taxes, uh, with their income. And, um, I don't see why not to go forward.
Well, I'm hearing a couple of different things. I'm hearing about giving some potential relief to certificate holders, given the fact that they may have made some changes, not knowing the consequences. And I think I can maybe get behind that, but, you know, like a lot of these things, the devil's in the details. Um, I think, I think property that's, I mean, there's going to be a lot of different scenarios that can come out of this, right? So what happens if a a property moves into an LLC that's a holding company for multiple properties?
Exactly.
I mean, and it's the same person that owns it and now has a percentage of that. There's a lot of different situations that can.
You, and that's my concern.
Okay.
Or the, we got a letter from somebody who, there were three people and now there are two. And that, in my mind, is a clear change in ownership. I mean, it's got to be, in my mind, a one for one, you know, one human being going to one human being's LLC.
I would take it even a little bit farther and say that if you had three people listed as owners and they wanted to transfer it to an LLC that had three per person, the same three people. So it was a like and like and kind transfer that, I'm just throwing this out there. I probably could get behind that because that, to me, is not a transfer, just like a single person to a single L, pair LLC. But I think where, you know, things in my mind start coming apart is when we start adding or removing owners to the equation of either the LLC
Right.
Property ownership.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Russ.
Well, with respect to, sorry, I was just going to say with respect to removing owners, I mean, you also have situations where property like could be held jointly by a husband and wife, uh, and maybe there's
That's my point.
divorce or one of them dies, is that a change of ownership?
Right.
Um, in a, you know, in in like a partnership, if one partner buys out the other and now owns the property by themselves instead of jointly with someone else, is that, so. I mean, by all means, go on with the big picture stuff, but then we will have to dial in some details.
This is my whole point, right? There's so many different.
Right, and we do have, you know, uh, couples that are partners that aren't married, uh, that have ownerships.
Yeah, I I mean, I really, I think, I I worry that that's an, uh, loophole, uh, Russ.
Right.
Yeah, I do need to excuse myself, but, uh, but again, this is where we have to get them up with the rulebook, right? We're at the situation where we're now where we need to be, right? We have to address this. We either choose to do something that's going to accommodate some of these situations, we define what those are, which is kind of what we're doing, just thinking out loud. Or we don't do anything and we just, we leave it as it is.
That's what we're talking about.
Right, so I'm for moving towards getting better rules in place to consider some of the situations we may run into. There may be some situations being explained that I would say that's not a change we can support. You have to, you know, you're going to lose your license. But again, until we get that in front of us in black and white with some things to look at and kind of pull apart.
Well, the point of this is to give them enough direction to know what we're looking for, so.
And I think this, this discussion probably illustrates that point pretty well, is that there are so many different situations uh, and arrangements that, uh, and the the questions on page.
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you. Five and six of the report are are kind of designed to just get us generally thinking about the the different areas that maybe we want to pay attention to and and to hopefully get some feedback from the council as to, you know, if there's maybe some kind of tentative consensus as to, we would like to see this kind of exception fleshed out in greater detail.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, where I think about it right now, you know, and there there are a lot of scenarios and one that we haven't brought up yet that we had a resident come up, talk about, and I thought about as well, and he's probably not the only one, who, um, you know, they're getting on an age, um, and, uh, and, uh, they, as far as the inheritance, um, uh, you know, and they're leaving. Just because they have a decent house here in Saga Talk doesn't mean their kids are wealthy and their kids are stuck with the home, you know. So I I think about, I think about that as well, and even as a residence, not just as a, you know, uh, not just as an STR rental, so.
Yeah, I I again, I, there, there are other ways to make money on a house here besides short term running.
Good point.
And I think people can long term rent, and if we're ever going to get
Right.
Short term rentals under control, we, I just, I'm strongly opposed.
Well, yeah, Mayor, that's where I am. I'm, you know, the objective, overarching objective has been to, you know, once again, maintain our small town character, have real full time residents here, have families here. That's what I campaigned on. That's why I'm at this table. And, you know, I'm okay with the things we're doing to try to rebalance things where it's, it is more possible to create more tourist bedrooms and and more visitors coming in the appropriate places, but to also preserve, you know, our traditional neighborhoods, so we can have families here that we, you know, because we need the kids to work in the shops and the businesses. You know, we need people that, you know, wo- work here full time and live here full time, that volunteer in the community. So if we can find a way to 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 square that, you know, without creating something that undermines what what I think are absolutely essential protections on our residential neighborhoods, then I'm willing to continue this discussion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I ran on not that, and I was elected too.
Yeah.
And so I think that people, the majority of the people have no idea yet how this is going to impact. Um, I think you've got a good group sitting here right now going, what the heck happened? And I I remember Scott, uh, uh, Councilmember Dean saying, if you don't like how I vote, don't elect me. And I would hate to see this turn into that becoming the big issue again in the elections. I just think that the way it is right now, it is mean spirited to not consider people uh, with their families or their LLCs or their trusts, to find some way to allow them to um, use that, especially if they've, they've been in the property for 10 years, 12 years. They've been good, good things. So, so we have a difference here.
Yeah, no.
And and I think we're going to have to see a variety of of areas. Because I personally think that if you have generational transfers, that's just great, because that's.
It keeps the character.
Keeps the character, keeps the family.
Keeps the family here.
So it it feels like there is consensus on, um, allow, exploring how we can tightly allow somebody, um, a person to put it into an LLC with their same social security number or, um, or into their trust, again, same person. So, um, it would be what Mr. Weir, I think, was describing. Um, it, there, there was, it seems like there's
Yeah.
Consensus around that, okay. Um, what about generational transfer? I I think Scott and I have both said that we are not for that. I know, um, Chris and Russ have said they are. Where are?
Um, I am, as, again, that was on my platform too when I ran again, and those that elected for me, um.
And, um, Joe and Lauren, where are you? And I I just want to get, let me finish this. So, because I don't want to spend, invest legal resource coming up with solutions if there's not a consensus to.
I think you have to, to allow the public to know what those options are. Yeah, I don't think you can shut it down just because we got a 4-3 vote right now.
Well, we've, but we've, we have an ordinance that council passed, so, I mean, I I guess I would look to.
But I I also, um, also, uh, wanted to add that, um, um, that, uh, um, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So Joe and Lauren is, I I just want to get a sense of where you are.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I think I'm in a similar camp where I would be reluctant to want to support generational transfers, um, mostly for the reasons that Council Dean specified. Um, I go back to how all this came about, right? Was the residents of our community are, you know, were fed up with the density problems. And I just see us heading down a long road of, you know, never getting the numbers to a reasonable balance, right, which is what our residents are asking for. That's point one. Point two, to your, what you said, uh, Mayor, there are other ways to make money, long term rent. In fact, I think our town would benefit if we had long term rentals by getting more, you know, residents in that can't afford an outright buy but want to move into the community. So I see some benefit there. I don't want to force anybody out of their house, right? But at the same time, I don't, and this may sound a little mean spirited myself, but I I don't see it as in the town's, the city's charter to protect, you know, investments in property that people have made that are commercial in a residential district. So that's kind of where my head's at right now. If there were to be some, some thoughts or 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 movement on that, I would have to be, in my, for me to support it, I have to be very, very limited. You know, and I don't know that we could ever even get there, so.
As far as trans, uh, generational transfers, I just love the idea of, yeah, you can still transfer it to your, you know, your children, and they can keep it as a cottage. And if they, you know, can't afford it, there are other ways that it can be affordable, whether it's long term rental. You can do the nine month rental, rent it out for the major, you know, like a month at a time. You can do, you know, one month rentals. There's options that are out there. Um, and I also think back to, gosh, not that long ago, about 2010. And I know this because I, you know, I own Red Dock and most of the kids there grew up on the Hill. And the kids that work for me grew up on the Hill. And, um, their parents are now empty nesters, and I just want the next generation of families to start living on the Hill again. Um, that's just my thought.
Okay, so I don't think there is consensus to work on a generational transfer. And given that we spent many public hearings on this topic last year, I don't, I don't think it's worth investing more city staff time or resources. And unless the other three people say, no, we want to, um, I think we 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 explore the LLC, the personal trust option, but, um, leave generation. The, and and again, we're all for people passing on their properties. It's just the short term rental license that doesn't go, so.
And then.
And there are other options to rent. And a good point on the one month. I mean, um, you could do three, you know, 31 day rentals and, um, make good money.
Excuse me. We're we're not in public. I'm I'm sorry.
You could do it in, at the end.
At the end, at the end you may.
Okay.
Jake?
So the, the, the last piece is, um, those prior transfers of property subject to STR certificates. I assume that if we're okay with prospectively allowing transfers to, say, a single member LLC, you would be okay with that happening in the past, but as Luke tells it, the 15 that are um, at issue right now, some of them were corporate transfers like that, some of them were generational transfers. Some of them were just straight up sold and the new owner is operating it as an STR. Do we want to carve out more for them other than like those kind of single owner LLC type transfers?
I don't know why we would be different, right, you know, in the past than we would being forward. And so if, if we are, if we want to change our ordinance so that we allow the, you know, social security number to social security number LLC or trust, then those that were turned down, I think we, we give them a pass since, I mean, I don't think it'd be fair that we, you know, there are a handful of people who got caught, but anybody in the future wouldn't get caught. That doesn't strike me as being fair. But does anyone disagree with that?
You're you're saying all of the, all of the cases, all of these 15 cases?
Yeah, so we're going to say, so say that, and Alex, I can't remember your specific situation, but if we turned him down because he he went from his owning it to his personal LLC, if we're going to allow that going forward, but we've turned him down, I don't think that's fair.
Oh, sure.
What about the, you talked about the first bucket, the first bucket of people that had this before.
Yeah, so those, that, and and that's what we're talking about now.
Right.
There were, there were, and I think some of these transfers are a year or two or more old.
Right.
That were made of properties subject to an STR certificate under the city's old regulations. And now they are either, um, the certificate is expiring now, requiring them to apply for an STR license, or it's going to expire in the near future. And the fact that that transfer happened will, will render them available.
Can I ask a good question, though? But by default, this certificate expired if the ownership transferred.
It would be void upon the transfer, yeah.
Correct, so it's not that they're going from having the certificate now to wanting to get us licensed. They lost the certificate at the time of transfer.
Yes.
Sorry, it's just a nuance, but.
Right, so, and and they've lost the certificate at the time of transfer. And there is a mechanism in the STR licensing ordinance that says if you had a certificate, you can apply for a license when it expires, notwithstanding that you're in a district that's subject to a cap. Um, and so I think that's the way that some of these are cut up now, is there's, there's an application submitted because Luke going through and and seeing all the property transfer affidavits, just for the purpose of seeing if people are transferring short term rental property. transferring short term rental properties is a relatively new development. I think until he started doing that, there wasn't really any monitoring by the city of, hey, every time a property is sold, we have to double check it against our, our list of short term rentals to see if it's going to impact the certificate. That that was just on the, the old owner and the new owner to figure all that stuff out.
And again, this is all in the R1 district.
Yeah, correct.
This is, I just want to clarify that. So folks out there know it's not the whole city. We're just still talking about the R1.
Okay, so.
Can I ask one more question? And all of these transfers took place between the time the short term rental ordinance was passed and where we are today.
Some of them could have taken place before the time the short term rental ordinance was passed. So the short term rental certificates are good for three years. So at the time that the short term rental licensing ordinance was passed, you, you could have had transfers that happened two years ago.
Right.
But 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 the reason I asked the question is, so let's, let's just assume that this happened a year ago. A property transferred. The new owner did not have a short term rental license at that point in time, correct?
Yeah, upon the transfer, the certificate is just avoided.
But had the opportunity to to obtain a new certificate.
More than a year ago. Yes, I think we're pretty close to the one year anniversary.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
So, yeah, and and that would have been true at any point in time. And and that's some of the stuff we talk about in the report is that it it was incumbent on the people who had those certificates to understand what the requirements of the city code was. And there was not anything that at the time those transfers were made from either, you know, updating their application or submitting a new application to to fix that. But it's, I mean, as as Luke kind of points out, I mean, it's clear that it's not, it's not something that that was apparent to to the number.
Okay, so you have what you need on, um, so on the transfer of ownership from a, you know, into a personal trust or a personal LLC. Um, and the generational transfer of licenses, we're not going to take up now. Then the other area, uh, so we had the sort of the ZBA issue on appeal.
Yeah, well, there was, so if.
And then we had the
Late applications.
Missing the deadline.
Yeah. And and so in order of the report, I have the late applications next. And I think we've heard from a couple of people today who have missed the application deadline. And right now, the ordinance is very clear for a renewal application. So you have an existing SDR license and you're filing an application to renew it. It has to be done no later than 30 days before it expires. There's not language in the ordinance that says when you have to submit a application for an SDR license, if you're coming from an SDR certificate. But you need to, at a bare minimum, do that before it expires. And there's things that have to happen from an administrative standpoint before an SDR license can be be issued. So the, the question that was raised to us is, does there need to be some kind of flexibility in the deadlines that we have? And I mean, is a, is a threshold matter? Can there be? Yes, there's, there's no like strong legal reason, I guess, for or against it. I think there are some, some practical considerations that may be cut against this. So the the first is just kind of the administrative burden. So it's incumbent on city staff to process applications. And then there also has to be a inspection by the fire district. And then all that ideally happens before the existing certificate or license expires. If that does not happen before the existing license or certificate expires, you're, you're often left with a situation where someone now no longer has a valid license and they're, they're renting illegally while they're waiting for it to be processed. And so any, any condensing of the the 30 day window that we have here is going to create an administrative burden. And, you know, like, let's say that Luke gets a ton of applications at once for whatever reason. And some of them, you know, they're saying, well, I, you know, my, my license expires in five days, but here's the application. Please go ahead and process it. That's just a big burden on city staff. And then there's just kind of also the issue is, you know, I I think wherever the council draws the line, eventually there's going to be someone who is a day later. And so it has to be drawn somewhere. Now, the, the what I've set forth in the report is if if you really wanted to, you you could adopt some kind of waiver provision that, you know, would maybe be some sort of recognition of, okay, if there's truly exceptional circumstances, and I don't really know what they would look like, but if there's really exceptional circumstances, and it's, it's something that's beyond the control of the applicant and the city is still going to have time to process your application. Then you could have a, a, a waiver mechanism in there if you want. But I don't know if that's something that staff would necessarily appreciate because that's an even more administrative burden. And now you're kind of putting them in a crosshairs for, you know, where instead the ordinance says 30 days and sorry, my hands are tied. Now it's, you know, well, you gave this person a break. Why am I not getting a break? And then do we want to like provide some kind of appellate relief to to review that decision? And and so it it seems like that would be accompanied by some, some, some complications there. It it really is up to the, the council as to whether you want to allow late filings. I mean, I I get that life is busy. People have a lot of stuff going on. It's hard to stay on track of everything. Um, and so if there's an interest by the council to to put something like that in place, it can do so. I I don't necessarily love the idea of adding a waiver mechanism. And then one of the other things that I I I talked about with with Ryan, and I think we we brought this up previously. But we we talked about putting all of the SDR licenses on basically the same renewal schedule. And when this was first brought up, uh, I I think the, the Chief Janik was like, it's not really going to be feasible for us. Uh, one of the things that Ryan and I spoke about, and it's, it's in the report is, you know, if we, if we had the renewal be like a couple of months before the expiration deadline, maybe there could be some efficiency in the fire district conducting like all of the inspections at once, because now, you know, if you have 15 of them in a single neighborhood, you can schedule the, you know, those for the same day and be done with it for a couple of hours or in a couple of hours rather than making separate trips out there. But that's not a discussion that we've had. And so it's just something we're, you know, we're sort of throwing out. If there's any interest there, we can, we can have that conversation with the fire district. But otherwise, I mean, our, our position is that you have to have a deadline eventually. And it's, it's generally incumbent on people, especially when you have something like a license or a permit from the city to to pay attention to those deadlines and hear to them. So happy to take any thoughts here.
Thoughts or questions?
Have you, have you seen that, run into that before? You talked about, you know, doing the LCCs and seeing that issue before. Have you seen this kind of issue where folks are posted the deadline and?
I don't, this isn't really one that I've run into all that much. No, I, I, and and it's not to say that there's not communities doing it out there because I I mean, short term rentals, there's, there's so much that goes into them. And every community's approach is going to be very specialized based on the particular challenges that community has. Uh, but I I can't say that I've seen this in practice before.
I was just thinking like a 10 day, you know, like a seven day or 10 day waiver. That's all. You know, like, and then, and then charge a late fee. You know, and that could be a hefty late fee. That would be for, you know, administration. That's when, when we started talking about this, when I got the email, I I from friends of the folks that spoke to Lufflers there, that was the first thing I thought of, you know, a 10 day and a mighty height and a, 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 a fee to pay for all of it, you know? Um, I would be on board for that.
Well, I, the first thing I ask myself is, you know, are we giving property owners enough time? Right? Are we being fair? And if the answer is no to either one of those, then I think, and when I say fair, we have to be fair to really three different stakeholder groups, the property owners that are looking for short term rentals, the people who are waiting in line to get a hold of a certificate, everyone comes up. And then the residents in the neighborhood, which we've already talked about, right, who are looking to see the numbers come down. And I don't want to see technicalities used to kind of drive those numbers down, but it's, but it is going to happen. There's always going to be somebody that's going to be late. I do like the idea of doing them all at one time because it kind of takes a lot of the uncertainty off the board, right? If, you know, it's like your taxes are always due on April 15th, at least to the federal guys and estate guys. And, you know, they don't, they don't take much quarter when you're late, right? I mean, it's going to cost you and so, you know, if, if there was an elegant solution to make it easier and on our property owners and more predictable, that would probably be it in in my book. But I also don't want to overburden our staff.
Right.
That I would have to rely heavily on our city manager to guide us on whether that's appropriate or not.
Yeah, it sounds like that's just a kind of a nonstarter for the fire district because it just puts so much work in a, a short period of time.
Short period of time. Is that, Ryan, you're?
Yeah. Can you make on that timeout though?
If it was two months or something like that. If you like gave you two months to get it all done or three.
Three, I don't.
In the off season or something.
Yeah, eventually you're talking about when everybody's on the one year schedule and has the license you're talking about, you know, I mean, 250 and 300 inspections. And that's just our community. You know, they have Douglas in the township that they do inspections for as well. And I think the other challenge with picking the timeframe is probably going to be like, when's the best timeframe to do that? So, you know, you would think, okay, middle of the winter, it makes sense. But there's so many properties that are winterized. Property owner's not here and they're not available to even, you know, meet the fire department and have an inspection. We've run into that before a number of times. And then I think, well, maybe it's, it's the fall better. Well, I mean, I mean, look at call volumes. And so I I can certainly ask the fire department if it's at all feasible to pick a three month timeframe and and report back to at least ask the question if you'd like. Um, but I could see some challenges with that. And and then depending on when that three month period is, that can be a lot of applications, certainly for, you know, staff to process all at once as well.
Yeah. And and I've seen communities go to the like universal renewal deadline model, but they're smaller communities with with much lower numbers of short term rentals.
I, well, I have, I'm going to have to leave shortly for the deer meeting, but I I am intrigued by what Councilmember Muncie said. I mean, I I want, once again, I mean, you know, the ordinance, I I don't want to see our ordinance is diluted or, and I don't want to see loopholes created. But if there's a way that the ordinance and the deadlines maintain their teeth, and there are significant penalties for late filing, you know, you know, late fees and the like, once again, that, you know, that sort of basically we can, you know, takes into account all the staff time that like, okay, now I gotta do this because they they forgot to do it. And I, you know.
And maybe late fees would deter people knowing that they do have.
I mean, I think it's important, you know, once again, we're the early stages of this. So I'm glad we're having these discussions, you know, because, you know, these are some of the things that we probably anticipated would happen in terms of unintended consequences, these, you know, these hopefully one offs. But once again, I don't want to take the teeth out of the ordinance where it's like, oh, yeah, you can file it whenever the the deadline doesn't matter. The deadline does matter. But once again, things do happen to people. People lose mail, you know, you know. I remember once with my property taxes here, I was late and I had to go deal with it at the county and I had to pay, you know, I had to pay my subject taxes, you know, with the county and it cost me more. And that's on me, you know, but they wanted my money. I mean, so. You know, so I'd be willing to explore that a little bit. But once again, you know, I have to get right done to kind of just my, my core belief here is that we really can't be carrying our ordinances apart just because we've had a few. And once again, I'm very sympathetic to everyone that's here. And I'm sympathetic to these, these unintended consequences and these honest mistakes that that clearly have happened. But I can't destroy an ordinance just to save one, one person. So there's got to be a balance here.
Well, and and it's a separate question. I mean, the, I think there's two individuals who's talked about just narrowly missing the deadline. That is a different issue retroactively than it is prospective. So if we carve out some kind of grace period, you know, like Councilman Ramoncy was talking about, that works from the date that amendment to the ordinance takes effect. That doesn't do anything for the people that already missed their deadline unless, again, the council wants to write that retroactively. Which you know, you talked about an elegant solution. It's, it's not going to be particularly elegant again.
And I I'm afraid that, you know, in in as much as I, I very, I feel very bad for, you know, these situation or two we're talking about. How can we do that? And then the next person comes up in their lane, you know, and, you know, then we're going to get in trouble.
Exactly.
You know, uh, before you know it, they'll say, hey, you did it for them. You do it for us. And then bam, we've got another lawsuit. And and we all know we don't want another one of those.
Chris. And I appreciate what Councilmember Muncie and Dean said. And I know it can, you can just keep extending it on out. But the reason I like the idea of the deadline and then the grace period with a late fee is because that eliminates any, well, I didn't know, I didn't get a chance. It's like, no. You had one shot.
You had a shot and then you also had.
Late period, we had a late fee and you didn't do it. I'm going to jump around the other way, though. One of the things that I thought about, and I don't know what the, what it would do for staff, but we have hired two different groups to work on our short term rentals, Horizon and Granicus. And I would like just maybe to have the discussion about what would it cost? What would it be like to have the city be able to mail out individually? Oh, by the way, this is due on such and such a time. I know it'd be staff crazy now, but is there a company maybe that we could look at? So people do get a specific reminder in the mail. This is when your certificate is due. Just do that.
Okay, Lauren?
Um, just as far as the retroactive part of it, I just feel like, uh, things changed. And I feel like that's where I have some sympathy is that things changed. Um, we created this new ordinance and it wouldn't have affected them in the past because they could just go, oh, I was late and now I can do it. And now, you know, there wasn't a cap before. Um, so I can understand, um, that would be challenging going forward. You know, if there's a fine, you know, and maybe we won't ever see it again because people will be on top of it going forward.
Right.
Because things have changed so dramatically. So.
And like I said, like a 10 day, you know, give them, give, I say 10 days because that's a week and a weekend.
So before we lose Scott, um, a couple, so some things for consensus. A consensus on going forward a great, you know, say a seven or 10 day or whatever day grace period that comes with a steep fee. Is there, there is consensus for that?
I I would get behind that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we can agree to that.
It's a good idea.
And knowing, so just so everyone knows, all of the legal fees and everything that we spend on short term rentals goes into the short term rental fees. So this will result in an increase in short term rental fees. So we just, you know, because we have committed to our residents that we, the city is not going to underwrite that. So.
Right.
Um, okay, so what about the, the one time or whatever retro for the Lufflers? And I think they're the only ones who have asked for that. I mean, they're the only ones who have been caught in this.
Right.
I support giving it to the retro. I would as well because of the change in our ordinance and how things have happened. It would be one time.
I wouldn't, I would support it as well.
As as long as we're basically protected against creating a precedent. Yes.
Right.
But it's got, it's got to be, it's got to be ironclad, Jake. It's got to be, we can't be doing this every year.
So I.
Right. I agree, Scott.
If, if it aligns to the new exception that's being created in the ordinance, I I think that really helps get beyond preferential treatment because since
Right.
caps went into effect, I think this is the only one that's probably fallen within whatever late or grace period that the council would be establishing. I don't necessarily know off the top of my head, like what mechanism we would use to to retroactively cut them a break, but that's something that we can look at and 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 come to counsel with.
It's, it's got to be locked down.
Right.
I mean, I mean, a one off, I think, I think we're, I'm actually kind of, I feel we're fortunate, they won't.
I mean, I mean, a one off, I think, I think we're, I'm, I'm actually kind of, I feel we're fortunate. They only had one of these, but, but we, we can't do these every year.
So then what if, if we created some sort of a fine for being late, that's what they would face then?
Yeah, I, I think any fine we would do prospectively, we would have to do for them.
Right.
Right.
And, and it could probably be written not to, to like identify one single certificate holder, but say also submissions between X date, when the caps took effect and the date of this amending ordinance.
Right.
Who will be allowed if they were only so many days late and they pay the late fee, something like that.
I will just weigh in and say, I mean, I, I really, I've had lovely conversations with the Lufflers and I, I so appreciate how they have approached us as not angry, which is nice. Um, there, I do, I, I, I can go along with this, but I, I can't, I, I am, I it is not my inclination to let people miss deadlines.
Same here.
And because we've been, we've taken some pretty hard stances on people who have violated our ordinances. I mean, you know, the pavers, um, situation and the hardscaping and we said, yep, it looks better. I mean, especially with the hardscaping, we said, yeah, we like what you did, um, but we're going to enforce our ordinance. And I am also not inclined to go to all of the staff and legal expense to change an ordinance for, for one, one house, um, or one license, but, um, the consensus is here and, um, we'll move on.
Yeah. One thing is it's important to note because we have a lot of folks that are watching this conversation and Mr. Woody noted it in his, um, memo to you, but you know, we have tried to take proactive steps to let folks know that, hey, you really have to keep track of these deadlines. It's extremely important that you apply timely. So we, we, um, in fact, Lufflers mentioned that we sent in an email out, uh, back in, in August to all the short term rental agents and owners, and then we followed up with a letter. This past December, uh, just to flag that issue, we gave them tools on how to look up, you know, if they've, if they've misplaced where their license or certificates at, which has the date that it expires right on there. How to look it up online. Uh, folks have questions, they can reach out, uh, to Luke. We're more than happy to help look up those dates for folks, but we've tried to really flag this issue for folks. We're not running into it.
So to Chris's point, you've been doing that.
Well, we're not sending out a letter letting folks know specifically like 30 days before, hey, you need to apply, you're, you're expiring, but we've generally let folks know that they need to make sure and keep track of that date.
We get that notice. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, just, I wanted to just pat you on the back. The great communication. I know that I see it. Um, there's better communication going out at the city hall that I've seen in years. So.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Jake, do you have what you need?
For the late applications, yes, we have one more topic if.
Right. And that is, uh, yeah, the.
Plug it out with short term rentals. I am worried that people are going to keep on leaving if we keep this up. So. I will, I will say that's it for the night, but otherwise we can keep on going. If you guys still have an appetite for more.
Sure. If you need a break.
You need, okay. Yeah. We can pause. Do we want to take a two minute break or three?
Oh, I could.
I'll, I'll, I'll take this. During that break.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
How was your renovation going? My son did get it.
They took a tree sign out there. So I thought maybe they're.
I, well, there's something that's like, okay, fine, just wait because the mini needs to rip out all my bushes out front. It's going to look like a horrific landscape. So I guess I'm also going to use them slow playing it a little bit, but they did take down a tree. Because they're going to put footings for a porch out front. And they said it'll, the tree was already going like this. And it was a, we were either going to have to lap it off or do some sort of a thing that was going to cost a lot of money. And he said, you know what? The tree roots are going to get damaged anyway. So it came down. It's weird not having it there.
Yeah, it makes a big difference. We lost a couple in, in storms. Drive by, especially in the, in the winter time or in the summertime, there's.
Yeah.
You didn't really miss it.
I feel a little like a sly. I remember when, what were they called? Treesake used to come in and they would always do their chopping in the winter time.
Yeah.
Because you didn't notice.
Yeah.
That it was gone.
Well, that's like Scott, Herbert has been telling people like, hey, I've been like letting individual owners know when there's like a tree that needs to come down.
So you got a good idea there. Crazy money. Well, that's the first thing.
You gotta get that going.
And no more than 10 days, then that's it.
I mean, my first reaction when I read the letter was like, geez. There's no, you make a money tax bill. I know, I know when it's due, but then I actually said that I thought about, I said, you know what? They don't come and take my house day one, but it's pretty healthy with a healthy fine.
Right, right.
Immediately. And that's the next deadline, it gets ugly or not.
Yeah.
The last, the last kind of thing we have to do. Do you know what I mean?
I will be very surprised.
Yeah, right.
I think we just take baby steps. So we'll really get it right.
Right.
All right. It looks like, uh.
I will solve every single problem.
Right.
All right. It looks like we're all back. So we're going to go, we're going to restart the meeting. So people who are sitting out there, if you could stop talking so we can hear. Thank you. We're going to start, start the meeting again. Um, so the one thing before I was, um, for the late uh, thing. So we are, I want to be clear too, that we are not going to put this up to staff discretion, correct? Cause that, I think that is a Pandora's box. Okay.
And so we're, we're looking at a essentially a 10 day grace period with a, some kind of late fee assessed there. If you're past that 10 day window, you're totally out of luck.
Yep.
Yes.
That's it. Okay.
Yeah. Um, but we might need to back up the timing so that we don't, I mean, we just want to be sure that staff and the fire department have the time they need.
Yeah. And, and that is something that, that, that we'll, we'll talk about with, with Luke and the fire department is, is if in, in some certain instances, there's 20 days instead of 30 days, is that perable?
Okay.
Okay.
And if the answer is no, then maybe we'll just reevaluate the whole thing.
Okay. And knowing that this is going to take some while to get the paperwork done. I think the other question for the Lufflers is, um, will they, because they have people signed up to rent, are they able to continue operating in, in this limbo period?
So that's a pretty interesting question. I, I think there's maybe a couple of options that the city can take to potentially allow that. Maybe in the form of like an informal non enforcement letter pending amendment to the city code. That is something that I'd need to
Okay.
Explore in, in a little greater detail.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Cause I, I would, I bet at the end of this meeting, that is a question that.
Russ would answer, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So now we get to the appeals. And I, I want to be sure I know what it is we're thinking of people appealing. So my assumption was that it would be, it was, this was for violations, um, versus not liking.
Like an expiration?
Right. It's not an expiration appeal. It's a violations appeal.
So under the, the current STR licensing ordinance, there is an appeals, well, not necessarily an appeal process, but there is the, the city council kind of sits as the appellate body. So any decision to, um, suspend or revoke a short term rental license that is automatically accompanied by a hearing in front of the city council. So all of this, it's, it's built in due process.
Right.
Ordinance where, and it's, it's only a suspension or revocation. Um, and that, and that does encompass under the, for, for STR licenses only. Um, that also encompasses a unauthorized transfer that, that voids or terminates a STR license.
Okay.
So, a, and there is a little bit of nuance here because under the previous regulation, if you made an attempted transfer, or I guess if you transferred your, your, your property or what have you, your STR certificate is just void. That's the end of it under the new regulations. If that happens, it, it goes in front of the council. There is a, a public hearing and then there's a decision to suspend, revoke, or I guess uphold the fact that the, the license is no longer valid. And so the, the question that was posed to me and, and our discussion here earlier makes me think that maybe there's a different question out there as well. The, the question that was initially posed to me was, well, should the council's decision on STR licensing, you know, revocations and suspensions, should that be appealable to the zoning board of appeals? And the answer is it can be. So there's, there's case law out there. I mean, like the, the, the big thing is, is that the zoning board of appeals, they hear deals from zoning decisions, um, but there is Michigan law on point that, that has not taken issue with a ZBA performing functions under a police power ordinance. So if the council wants to sign some function to the ZBA under the STR licensing ordinance, it could do so. Um, I think the better question is, is why would the council do that? Um, and the, the concerns that I've initially flagged is just, you know, you're going to add to the ZBA's caseload. They're going to have to learn a new ordinance. Um, and some of the you know, I, I guess the, the nature of some of the stuff that's going to be coming in front of the ZBA might not be consistent with what they're, they're used to hearing because in these revocation or suspension hearings, you might get you know, testimony from Luke or the neighbors or a property owner or a local agent, like all saying, you know, this is why or why not a, a STR violated the terms of the ordinance, leading to the present suspension or revocation. Um, so if you want to add an additional appellate dimension, uh, for internal appeals from decisions of the city council to the ZBA for decisions made under the STR licensing ordinance, you can could do so, uh, right now as it stands. I think if, if someone doesn't like the city council's decision, their, their regress is to take it to court.
Well, and same for ZBA. I mean, so I, I think the appellate process, whether it's ZBA or city council, if you don't like that decision, then it goes to circuit court. So it, you'd kind of end up at the same place. Um, so I, I, I'm just curious. So Chris, yeah.
I think that when I first looked at this, it was a question of what it was, was the door open to you? Or does it just slam shut the minute the city council does, other than having to go to court? Um, we have the three step process. If you get the one violation, then you get a second violation, a third violation. And I think with the discussions have gone really well here. I think this is one where I'd rather wait and see if we have a circumstance come up like that. As opposed to trying to create, trying to solve a problem that's not there yet. Great. I, I, I agree, but any.
So is it a matter of it, say it goes through three violations and their license has been revoked, is it going in front of city council or is it going in front of ZBA?
A revocation would come to us.
Yeah. You go to the city, to the city council three different times, I think. Right? With each violation?
Well, it could be.
So hopefully for, for when there is an action taken to suspend or revoke the license. So.
So it only come before council after their third.
There's some level of discretion for the city staff as to whether, I mean, there's, there's different ways to enforce the STR ordinance. You don't like the first time a neighbor complains, you know, hey, the, the music was on at 10:01 PM or whatever the, the problem is, that doesn't necessarily mean that, okay, we're immediately going to the council to see if the license should be suspended. I mean, there's, there's informal resolution processes. I mean, depending on the nature of the violation, maybe Luke is going to decide that it's more prudent to, to issue a citation. Um, I, I think it would be the more and it, and it all kind of depends on the circumstances and the, and the city has a lot of prosecutorial discretion in how it approaches violations. Um, but it's at some point before you're actually saying, we're taking away the ability to use your property as an STR for a set amount of time or forever, that's when it goes in front of the council.
Yeah. I, you know, anecdotally, I, I, I mean, from what I've heard from actually even a realtor in town who owned short term rentals that a lot of times somebody will call, I mean, he was telling me an example where somebody called the fire department, um, that there was a fire in the, you know, a fire in the backyard and it turned out somebody's barbecuing. And so, you know, that wasn't a citation. Um, so it, it seems, I, I like Chris's idea of, I don't know that we have a problem, um, that we need to solve, but if
Right now, yeah.
Right now. And if, and if, you know, it seems like there's an issue, we can revisit, but, um, just doesn't. And, you know, people, I mean, now there is an appeal process if, or there is a process to have your case heard. Um, if somebody's license is suspended. So that seems fair.
Well, and, and to that point, we touched on it briefly, but I, I mean, it, it is a separate question. If you're talking about, you know, just having your, your case heard and, and having an, an appeal. I mean, right now that the, the council's authority is very limited and it's basically kind of just a double check on a suspension or a revocation. If there's interest in it, I mean, the other option would be to build in some kind of waiver or variance mechanism, but that's going to be. I mean, I think as, as we saw today, there's, there's going to be so many different situations. It seems like that's something that would come up a lot, but.
Yeah. I, I think if we sense that there's a problem, we'll know about it before it gets to that point and we can deal with it done. Okay. Awesome. So before we move on, um, anything else on short term rentals or Jake, anything else you need?
I think I've gotten more than enough.
Okay.
Look at your guys' faces. You probably have too. If there are any other questions though, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think at this point, uh, what we can do is, is circle back and look into some of these things, probably get some proposed language out there for the council.
Right.
And, and revisit this in a couple of weeks.
Cool. Well, um, thank you. Thank you to you. Um, thanks to our planning consultants to, you know, um, Luke and Ryan and the rest of city staff, um, the task force, the planning commission, um, this council, all the people in this room on Zoom and who've been part of this process. It has been, uh, quite a journey that we've been on, but I, I think we're having, um, you know, I think we're making good progress.
Real quick, um, you said a couple of weeks, so this would be something that uh, would probably come to not this coming Monday, but then a couple of weeks from that to something that we'd be ready to vote on.
No, it'd come to.
Just so these folks.
It'd come to a workshop.
Yeah, I think it would come to a workshop.
A workshop again? Okay. Just so these folks know.
Yeah, I'll actually, I'll be gone all next week.
Okay.
And I don't necessarily want to deliver this project to someone else at my office, uh, out of consideration for their wellbeing. So, yeah, probably either that workshop or the following one, I think is when we could have some.
Just so folks that are, they know kind of a timeline.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Jake.
Oh, and, and sorry to that point, one other thing, uh, the nice thing about all of this being contained in the licensing ordinance is it does not have to go in front of the planning commission. Um, the, the council can just adopt these changes to the ordinance. It has the option to send them back to the planning commission if we want to do that, but otherwise the you guys can make the changes all at the council level. Um, so that the ordinance adoption process, once we settle on what we want to do is going to be more streamlined.
Okay. Just to put it out, where are we at with the Lufflers then? What did we decide?
I think we're. I think we're
I understand that it is the council's intent to allow them to continue to operate in the meantime while these changes are being explored and effectuated. And so I will look into a good way to do that.
So that the all the people that they have so far contracted with, they're able to go forward with those rentals. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thanks, Jake.
Uh, okay. Lisa, patient, 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 Lisa. This is this is the second, that's second time we've you've been with us for a long time. So we are moving on to the temporary art installation at Cook Park. Ryan, you want to set that up?
Yeah, so Lisa was before you in in January to kind of at a high level, you know, request or talk with you about whether you were interested in allowing CVB and SCA to use the Cook Park space for a temporary art installation. And at that time, you said, yep, I think we're we're interested in, you know, generally. Now we're at the point where they've 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 got an RFP back and they actually have more details. We're we're at the point where they're actually asking for formal approval with actual plans for you to approve. This also is going to need historic district commission approval and they've submitted that application. And then the Parks and Public Works Committee will will take a look at the end of the month as well. Well, Lisa, maybe kind of present what what she has received so far that like to add any particular details that.
Sure. You all have this in your packet. We have a proposal from artist Jeffrey Sanco, who is West Michigan local. He's Allendale, but if you take took a look through the packet, he's had quite a lot of installations around, not just West Michigan, but also the country. The one that you may have seen firsthand was at the Gerald R. Ford Airport. It's pretty cool. So this is the second, I would have had this in you guys to the Historic District Commission on time. But the first proposal he gave us wasn't beefy enough for me. It wasn't enough to, in my mind, warrant the money and it wasn't enough to warrant a shoulder-seasoned attraction. So we went back to him and said, is there anything that you can do? And indeed, he did. He came back with what you're looking at now. So instead of just three, what he's calling flowers, there's now 10 on both sides of the sidewalk. And if you took a look through the packet, you'll see that they're also lit at night, which is very cool. That was one of the things in the RFP that we asked for is that this could be also a nighttime activity that you could go. So he did it on both sides of the sidewalk so that Scott Herbert could keep that sidewalk clear and people could walk down and view the flowers throughout the the winter season. So the installation would still be either October and November and it would stay up through March. That's about it.
Questions for Lisa?
Yeah. LED lights, are these separate light fixtures or are the lights within the sculpture itself?
Lights are on the sculpture.
Oh, I see.
He's asking, his next step is, and in an email this week, is the artist has asked for a park visit where he would come and find out where the electrical outlets are.
Okay. I see now.
And what's required.
Do we have electric outlets?
Then there there would be additional outdoor lighting as well, right? Like uplight?
That's potential. That's not necessarily part of it. There are electrical outlets. Ryan and I and Scott all walked the park weeks ago and I think we counted three.
Generally in the area surrounding, I mean, there's not, yep, yep.
On the information kiosk, there's.
And this would be in the winter, so there would be no worry about taking up extra room in a park during the summer.
Correct. It's shoulder season.
Right.
Which is part of our strategic plan.
So do you run lines? Will there be electrical lines then along the sidewalk?
Good question. That's one of the questions I was going to ask the artist when he did his park site visit.
Other questions count?
Just the the motif and the design and everything, does that the artist that just recommended that? Or did that go through PPW or?
That came strictly from him.
Okay.
Great.
I just think it's something that's great for, you know, it's, we we've had a dreary, cloudy winter. So something that can brighten things up in the off-season.
Yes, I agree.
Like you said, Instagram-worthy, you know, you know, guests that want to come to town, it'll be something.
If you've read through his packet, he he says that this exhibit is it is, it's about rebirth. And I thought that was perfect for Cook Park, having just lost the tree. People are wondering what's going to happen, what what are they going to put in there? Are they going to replace the tree? And if the CVB can put something on that property temporarily to bring people joy through the winter months until it's decided what happens with that property, then let's do it.
One, one last comment. This might open the door to other artists coming and saying, you did it for him, why don't you do it for us? So I think that's something we need to keep in mind. Art is very important to this community and everybody has a different idea of what it is.
That's true. But this was an RFP that we put out. We requested proposals. It wasn't somebody that came to us and said, hey, I want to put this exhibit up. This was the CVB going out into West Michigan saying, we're looking for an exhibit. This was the timetable. We had parameters set. So it's not like he came to us and said, hey, I want to do something. That's not what it was.
Okay, well, this will be on, we'll have this on Monday, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. And timed nicely after that is the agreement to indemnify and provide insurance coverage for July 5th fireworks and donate $5,000 toward the display.
Yeah, so the CVB is is again, graciously taking the lead on on the the fireworks for the Independence Day. And so they've secured Great Lakes Fireworks, who did Venetian Festival last year, to also do a show for Independence Day on Jul- on Saturday, July 5th this year. So the CVB is requesting donated dollars from each of the municipalities towards the cost of the show. The show is actually going to be bigger this year. I think $15,000.
$1,000.
There's $4,000 for barges. So so there's some increased costs. And so last year, the the request was for $3,000. This year, it's a it's a little higher, but we budgeted $4,000. But there's there's sufficient dollars in your event kind of services line item if you want to to up that donation to 5,000.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'm for that.
Only question I had was, do we consider the liability insurance to be high enough?
That is what's required. In fact, they're higher than what's required. Last year, the company didn't have insurance and we kind of piecemealed insurance together. This year, I think it's $2 million that's required. They're at $5 million. Great Lakes Fireworks is at $5 million and then the CVB's policy is for two.
Yeah, you, by ordinance, you actually have a requirement for insurance for fireworks. It's it is much, much less, but and and less than what it really should be. And so that's something that we discussed with our insurance last year is that we're not really covered for fireworks. So that's where we, you know, kind of have the indemnification agreement and higher amount. So we don't have a concern with the the $5 million level that Great Lakes is providing and then the CVB indemnifying on top of that.
At the city level, we don't, we aren't concerned. But if a firework landed on the boulder or ignited the docks or whatever, we could blow up blast past $5 million really quick. So just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
It's all part of the safety meeting that we'll be having in April. And there's a perimeter that has to go around that barge. So I don't think that, I think that these companies like Great Lakes, they also did it, as Ryan stated. They did the fireworks last year for Venetian and they'll be doing Venetian again this year. They've been doing this for a while in the middle of lakes from a barge. They know how to shoot them so that they're not endangering
Yeah, a number of adventures are involved with that. The DNR has to sign off, depending on the size of the shells. Yes, there's a blast radius that is required and and kept and enforced by the the Sheriff's Department and other fire departments.
Yeah, it wasn't a question of competency or procedure or regulations. It was a question of common sense and whether or not, if there were an accident, because they happen, right? Whether or not we feel that that was adequate to protect the interests of the waterfront. Just throwing it out there.
Great.
My only spike, $10 million, but it'd probably come back at a higher quote and we'd end up.
I remember not long ago, that insurance was $1 million. So it has, it has spiked up quite a bit now.
Just two comments for me. I I wish that Douglas would pay the same as us.
They're not paying the same as you, but they're paying more than they did last year. And they just decided that at their meeting Monday night.
Okay.
Monday or Tuesday.
And the other one is I am a no voter on fireworks from a water quality, air quality, wildlife, my dog. And and people who are sensitive to loud noises. So I will just say that now.
I I didn't.
And actually, you know, after short-term rentals, I have gotten the most correspondence on fireworks than and people who likewise are not fans of fireworks. So for what that's worth.
Just, I I would like to make a note again and and it would like, I I would like to see Douglas donate the same amount.
Yeah.
It would really show a nice partnership with us because I think both of our cities benefit from this event equally. That's all.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
This is the second time we've had you stay very late to, we appreciate you. Okay, that takes us to six E, the no-wake zone request for Cal Lake, Ryan, and it's page 47 of our packets.
Yeah, so back in September, reviewed a request from Sergeant Marina to make the entirety of of Kalamazoo Lake a no-wake. And I'm sorry to hear the gentleman that that submitted that is is passed. That's that's so. But I appreciate that that we're still here and considering his request. I know he was very passionate about it and and concerned. And so as you can see from the map that that Jamie has on the screen, that's kind of the, you know, the 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 cross red line areas where the existing slow and awake area is. And then the rest of the area that's unmarked is, there's not particular watercraft controls. And so we discussed in September that if you were interested in enacting a local watercraft control, there's a bit of a process to do that. One, we can only do that within our jurisdiction and and obviously the the city of the village of Douglas is on the other side of the lake. And I explained to the requister that would be wise for him to submit that request to them as well. Which my understanding is they've since done in Douglas's, at least reviewing. I'm not exactly sure where that where that process is at, but they expressed maybe some initial concerns with like, how would that that be enforced? But they're kind of reviewing as well. But the process really involves, you know, you have any initial discussion and then making a determination. Are you are you interested in pursuing this? And assuming you are, you know, you would direct or ask staff to prepare a resolution to enact a a local watercraft control or a request to the state to do so. We would schedule a public hearing, you would hold a public hearing, gather feedback. And then you would ultimately make a decision on whether or not you wanted to make that formal request to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources to enact a local watercraft control in the area. And then from there, they have a a pretty thorough process in studying the request and and coming up with a determination on whether or not they're willing to actually support it. And 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 then from there, you would, assuming they they say yes, we we agree that this local watercraft control is warranted, then there's a process where you actually have to adopt the ordinance, some some language processes that that work through there. So at the September meeting, you asked me to kind of, well, before we make a formal decision on on setting a public hearing, let's get some initial feedback from our marinas, let's talk with public safety to determine, you know, if we had a lot of particular reports or complaints of damage from wakes or injuries from wakes on boats. And and as the commenters from tonight, you know, commented, and you can see from the the comments that I provided, a summary of the comments from Chief Janik at the Fire Department, Deputy Chief Mantles, the Sheriff's Department, Marine Unit Administrator, the DNR Conservation Officer that that works in the area, as well as the area marinas, the feedback was was mixed. There's not a lot of documented damage reports. In fact, there was only one. There have maybe been some some injuries over the years. But I I think the feedback was that there's probably a lot of unreported things that maybe have occurred. There was a little bit of apprehension from some that that reviewed that that maybe should look at maybe some alternative options, whether it was expanding the no-wake zone to be a little bit further out from the marinas to help that wake dissipate as it as it gets closer to the marinas. Or looking at maybe restrictions on larger vessels that create larger wakes. So maybe a lot of lakes have maybe 26-foot restrictions. If it's larger than 26-foot, it's no-wake the entire lake. Otherwise, the smaller boats are fine. Or limiting tubing seem to be a point of concern and that maybe these larger wake boats that are kind of have skiers and and are zipping around that they're creating larger wakes and maybe they're more of the the problem. So as far as your options, you can take no action. I think this is kind of a a conversation that's come up on and off frequently over the years, is my understanding. Otherwise, we're happy to prepare a resolution for a particular watercraft control that you'd like to explore and we can set a public hearing and then go from there.
Um, if I could, just looking at how long it might take to go through the whole public hearing process, are there things that we could put into place? If if we don't get to that point, first of all, we haven't heard from Douglas yet. So in order to go forward, I feel like we at least need to hear from the other side of the lake to see where they stand on this. But are there things that we could put into place, like expanding the no-wake zone? So it's further out, especially along, you know, the marina areas and along the shoreline, obviously. Extending that out so people, you shorten your wake. And also the 26-foot boat restriction. I know a lot of the wake boats are only about 22 feet, I would say. So I don't know, you know, if we could kind of carve out an area with the wake boats because the wake boats create some of the worst waves. But I don't see a ton of them on our lake. I do see tubing. I do see jet skis and obviously the boats that are going up to Silver Lake. But.
Yeah, so we we can't do any of those. Those are all local watercraft control regulations that would have to go through the same exact process.
Okay, so anything that we do, we still have to go through the public hearing process.
Yep.
Okay.
This, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I I mean, first of all, I have seen plenty of damage done, you know, from the boats. That's not reported or it's taken through, you know, individual owners, insurance programs and what have you. To me, that's not the issue. It's all a safety issue. Two years ago, I watched, and I hope nobody gets, ever has to see this, I watched a kid get knocked off a boat right here at Singapore. If me and a gentleman standing next to me weren't there, he never would have made it. He couldn't swim. His father went in, he couldn't swim. It was a double rescue. I got the kid as he was going under like this, you know, I grabbed his hand and he got, managed to get him up. But it, I've seen multiple people getting knocked off their boats. It's, and there's no way, there's no way to say it's one type of boat or not, right? I've seen pontoon boats sitting there doing circles with 20 people on them, create just as much wake as a as a 40-foot cruiser going halfway on plane. So, you know, long way of saying, I think, you know, we would be remiss in our jobs if we didn't look at this from a safety perspective first and and try and take this thing forward and put something out there to kind of tame it down. I mean, you've got wakeboarder, you know, wakeboarders out there. At the same time, you have kayakers and paddle voters and it's just a recipe for something that's going to happen. So I'd like to see us continue this discussion and pursue it. Just my take.
I don't support a no-wake zone. I would, I would personally, we could take it in steps because my understanding is once this goes in, you can't remove it pretty much. It's it's pretty much there. It's very difficult. So I could see as as a council member, Lauren said, maybe let's look at the expanding the the area. Let's limit some of it, but I I am not in support of a no-wake zone through the whole harbor.
Full no-wake, yeah.
I'd like to learn more from our from our fellow communities as well before I I say a no-wake. You know, really, I'd like to see the whole thing no-wake, but I I see where you're coming from, Chris. You know, and and I I think that what Lauren said would be a perfect compromise. But I I'd like to hear what Douglas has to say too, before I really I mean, where I stand on it. I don't have enough information. But I I sympathize that back when we heard last year, the voter and when this came to our attention here. And I do see a lot of reckless behavior out there. So it's pretty small. It's a small lake.
Yeah, Chris, can you, I'm just curious to hear more and, you know, to the extent you can speak for others who would be against a complete no-wake. Because it's hard to retract, it'd be hard to change it, or I'm just curious to hear more.
Well, I I think the fact that that people are out there doing jet skis and water skis and tubing, I mean, that is an important part of a lot of people's water sports when they come here. And I think somebody said, well, you can do it somewhere else. No, you really can't. I mean, this is kind of the harbor for it.
Yeah.
And I I just see that as a And I I just see that as a perk for the tourism and the boating population. And we we were on the Sagatop, yeah, Singapore Yacht Club too, and it does bounce around. And especially it should it bounces around way down here. So my feeling is let's let's try to eliminate a little bit of that before we just say no, nothing.
I guess the only other thing I'd add is the sergeant's fuel dock is the only fuel dock we have in this town. And if we do extend, which, like anything is better than nothing. But if we were just to extend the no wake out, that still leaves that vulnerable. And, you know, I I think we had a good, we we heard enough about, I mean, three, four foot wake, trying to pull a boat in, do a side tie with the wind blowing. It's just, again, it's not a good situation. I think we really need to think about this. So.
So, oh, go ahead.
Well, we do have some jet skiers and we and I do see some of that activity, but not a ton of it. You know, I wouldn't have a problem with the whole thing being no wake myself, because I just think it's too small. Too small of an area. And and I see where Sergeant and all those folks are being affected. I see I see some of the jet skiing, but I don't see a whole lot of it here like I do in other communities. So I don't know if if that whole no wake zone would affect as many people, Chris, as maybe, you know, you're thinking. I guess that's what I'm saying. Like, again, I need more information. I want to know what Douglas says too, before I really think about it.
And and I think this is a good, good start. I mean, I think we need to have the conversations. But to go from where we are now to a complete no wake zone, I think we should at least hear from Douglas. And then at least maybe take some steps to see if we can fix it without removing the whole entertainment, not entertainment, recreational part out there that where people do like to ski and have tubing and that kind of stuff.
So are we in favor of going forward with the public hearing aspect of it?
Do we want to hear from Douglas first before we go forward or Ryan, what are you?
Or Douglas might want to hear from you first. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I I mean, I can, I I mean, I reached out to their you know, manager on on Monday and they just, you know, they have the request and, you know, they're they hadn't brought it. I don't think, I don't know if they'd formally added it to an agenda yet, is my understanding.
Well, one way or the other, we're going to hear from them, you know, eventually. So I think we should go forward with the with this.
Given that we have two council members who aren't here, who both have voting interests, I'm reluctant to push this too. I mean, I would like to hear have them weigh in. So maybe we revisit, reach out to Douglas again, see where they are. And then try to get at least another brief conversation when Scott and Russ can weigh in.
Yeah.
And then take it from there. I think it 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 is not lost on me that safety, we added safety to our priorities for the coming fiscal year. So I do, you know, Joe's comments and oof, man, resonate. And especially if there are hazards for people who are getting, you know, the the fuel worth. But I think we aren't ready to.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm bringing it back to to workshop.
Thanks. Thanks for coming in. Uh, okay, budget amendment for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, six F, which is page fifty five. And I know we have Nikki here. Ryan, do you want to tee that up? Have Nikki tee it up?
Yeah, well, Nikki presents with kind of midyear budget.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for being here and the work that went into prepping for it.
Well, thank you. There. It's my words. There are going to be a couple of recurring themes and I'm going to hit those first. Jamie, can you get to the, keep going? Yep, and keep going past that. So that we can, that's, this is going to give us more of an overall, these pages here. Off one, start there. No, down. We're going to start with that and I'm going to walk through the numbers with you guys. So that you've got an understanding of what we did. But I am going to give you generally some recurring themes, more revenue collected than expected. We like those words. Interest fund balance coming at higher. We like those words too. And, well, we don't like liability insurance increases, but you're going to see that running all through there. And so there we go. So we're going to start off with an increase in the personal property taxes. And the penalties and interest, again, just had a little bit more than we were anticipating. So we're raising the budget in order to catch that. Our two biggest effects are coming up because the Blue Star Trail isn't going to. I think the terminology isn't going to be finished this year. So we're not, so we went and took down both the revenue and much further on, we're going to see where we took down the expenses as well. And that goes again, along with the grants received at, you know, lowering it by two seventy five. But that's directly involved with the Blue Star Trail. There's a TMF grant will hire service. Let's see, will be higher for lead service lines. So we've got that. We also had, we're also taking down a little bit the franchise fees because we used to get money from the fire department for the work that Peter did. And obviously, Peter's not here anymore and he's still doing it. So that went someplace else. But pass revenue came in higher for the Oval Beach. Boat ramp fees, same thing. Police ordinance fees, same same thing. There's the interest earned that I was telling you about, our first one at sixty thousand. We also, now we're pulling down the street and in property fees. And and that was an audit adjustment that's having an effect. So they, the money came in this year, but it was actually for last year. And so they kind of retroactively pulled it back, which is going to reduce what we expect this year because of that.
But it will go back to normal then next year?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a reduction in what we were charging or what was coming in.
But that's just a posted number, right?
Yeah, it's it's the the money's been received as the timing difference.
So the money, the money hits the fund. It's just that it's being posted on last year's
Exactly.
operating statement. Got it?
Yes.
All right, so miscellaneous donations, we actually received several that we weren't expecting. So the Oval Beach WiFi, the milfoil treatment, tree planting. And there was some reimbursement from Blues for the Blue Star Trail design from both the township and the Friends of the Blue Star Trail. There's also a refund in there from the sales tax. But you're going to see that you're seeing an increase here, but you're also going to see an increase. And they kind of in the expenses and they offset each other. So that's what's going on with that. There's a nice little go on up, Jamie, page. There's a little hundred dollar increase for membership costs from Pro Tech. Four hundred dollars. Again, there's your insurance. It was actually a bit bigger bill than we had anticipated. So that's built in there. Ten thousand dollar contractual services for IT costs of the security and server. We reduced the audit expenses because it actually came in less than we were anticipating. So there's that in there. Got a couple of conferences for educational training, so an increase of five hundred. There's the insurance again coming through at a two sixty dollar change. We reduced the treasurer's salary by twelve thousand five hundred. I'm just kind of flowing right through. Yeah, because it went was when the budget was written, it was written with Peter in the position. And so, and I am learning, this is understandable. But also because I'm learning Plant Moran is bringing our expenses up by thirty five. So we've got that in there. And there's my education every chance I get. I go and find something, some way to learn something new. And the insurance. So then we're going to move on to City Hall. The DPW did spend some more time around here. And you're going to see it it's, this is a common theme in here because they had to irrigation, landscape restoration, some exterior painting, HVAC repairs, emergency exit sign repairs. And possibly something happening with the elevator. Well, that's going to increase your salaries. It's going to increase the fringe benefits and it's increasing the repairs and maintenance. Oh, yeah, so we're going to fix the door. Something too as well. Thank you. Thank you so much. You see the liability insurance is hitting us again there. The equipment rental is the motor pool. We have to rent our own equipment to ourselves. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to afford replacing or or fixing it. So we rent it to ourselves so that the other funds cover.
So why is that amount changing then?
Well, because they're using the equipment more, whether it's.
Oh, it's usage based?
Yeah.
Periodical, okay.
Yep, yep. The, when the guys give me their time sheets, they tell me what they've, what vehicle or machinery they were using for that period of time. So.
That's the little sheets of paper you were talking about the last time?
Yeah. Uh, it's one of the reasons why it's hard to get away from those little sheets of paper. And then our capital outlays, we increased that too to cover the irrigation and stormwater insulation. And there was a server software upgrade. Now we're going to get into the public works, trees. We planted more trees than we anticipated. And the and the Consumers Energy gave us a tree grant, which was really nice. But we can't offset that against that. We have to stick it into revenue instead. So we increased the expenses because we had a nice little bonus. And we're going to plan for more tree plantings before the end of the year. There's that offset that I was telling you about for the Blue Star Trail coming out, one million five fifty. So that'll hit next year. We'll be looking forward to that. Sixteen hundred again because of the insurance variance. We also increased signs because we put no parking signage for the hill, a new stop sign and new yield to pedestrian signs. Planning and zoning, same with Luke as it was with me. We replaced staff and so we salary was set for a different staff member. And so now we're reducing it to recognize the fact that we're we're all learning here. Office supplies, there's additional mailings for the STR situation. So that's coming through at the thirteen hundred increase. There's the liability insurance again. It's it's a theme. And the historic district, that part of Luke goes into that. So that's why, so if we're going to reduce one, we're going to reduce the other one as well. Waterways repair, we know that we've got concrete repairs coming up for the boardwalk. So there's the thirty thousand dollar increase there. A nine hundred dollar liability insurance increase. And the trash costs came in with increases from Republic. So we're, we've dropped another ten thousand to help cover that. All right, keep going down, Jamie. There you go. That's where we're at. So then Oval Beach Supplies, we there was additional credit card fees this year and season supplies. And we know we're going to go into that in May. So we've got two months yet to cover. So we made that a boost. And capital outlay for an extra twenty five thousand. That's the Starlink WiFi and the replacement radios are hitting in there. And the concessions, the twelve thousand dollars, that was my, that was my sales tax mistake. So, so again, we got the money back, but I can't net it directly. Okay, so major streets, interest. Okay, a little bit further down. There we go. The interest. We're making all kinds of awesome money. We like that. The five thousand dollar salary and wages, well, it snowed. This has been a really hard winter for us. And so we've got some money in there to help cover those costs and to make up for a shortage. There's a thousand dollars. Keep going down now, Jamie. Okay, there's a thousand dollars there. Lord, the local road mileage. Again, we received a bit more money than we were anticipating. And the interest, also receiving more than we had anticipated. And that goes through to this is four sixty three maintenance, but that's that's local streets. Same thing, just it's got its own spot. And you'll see also that there's additional motor pool changes for ninety five hundred. So that's in there as well. Same thing that we had before where we're just kind of using the equipment a bit more. And, I mean, that makes sense because of the snow and that type of thing. All right, we're almost there. So winter maintenance, one. See, ten thousand, five thousand, yep, it's right at the top of the screen. Additional snow events and then the motor pools charges that help cover the equipment that that does what we need it to do. Almost done, guys. Water and sewer ended up with a little bit more interest at, so we increased it by ten thousand dollars. And contractual services, we also increased ten thousand. Consulting costs for the water sewer agreement and local infrastructure rates. So there we go, that ten thousand right there. Let's see. And then motor pool fund, are we on that yet? I think. There we go. We, again, eleven thousand extra in interest. And we added eleven thousand dollars, this last one, guys, for the upcoming repair. We've got a street, a street sweeper that's going to need repairs. And Scott's been working to make that one reasonable for us.
All right, that's it. Great. Questions? So net net, we're, when you pull out Blue Star and then you add where we've increased revenue and add where we've increased expenses, we're kind of coming out whole. Yes. Overall.
Yeah, overall.
Great. Question?
Thank you.
We will need to approve this on Monday.
All right, thanks, Nikki.
Thank you, Nikki. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Nikki.
So moving on to six G, letter of support for the Township Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant. Page seventy six.
Yeah, ma'am, the the township submitted a kind of a formal request.
Yeah, ma'am, the township, uh, submitted a kind of a formal request asking that we submit a letter in support of a trust fund grant application that that they'll be submitting for a large piece of property along the Kalamazoo River. The township manager, you know, indicated it's a hundred nineteen acres and that they're looking to develop the property as a community park and nature preserve. Kayaks and fishing piers, trails, habitat restoration and more. So there's a draft letter in your packet that we're asking you to consider approving on Monday.
And this sort of as you might recall, they were trying to buy Pine Trail Camp last year and that got bought under by someone else. So I think they're still looking for opportunities to expand their parks. Where is this property at?
So the township manager, it's kind of a private opportunity that that they're in talks with with the trust fund and the donor, I guess, directly or the property owner directly with the trust fund. So they're not disclosing that at this point.
Okay. But it's in the township, we think. We don't know. Okay.
I hope so. If the township's pursuing.
Yeah, I guess that kind of goes without saying.
But it's along the Kalamazoo River.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions?
For them.
Okay. And then we are getting to six H, the special events request, and I think Jamie's teeing that up or Ryan or you, which who wants to tee that up?
Yeah, I think we lost Christine.
Yeah, so this is, um, as Ms. You know, Murphy indicated during her her public comments, she reached out to us in in January, kind of looking at, um, a request to add a tent in the street along Mary Street for some overflow for the, uh, the pub crawl that kind of starts and ends at her place of business. Um, so when when Jamie and I, you know, initially met with her, um, we we kind of flagged, well, you know, the, you know, public safety is probably going to have some concerns maybe with, uh, you know, the exposure to vehicles and that sort of thing. And they may want to consider ways to provide some safety measures to prevent them occurring. And so, um, we talked about the fact that Ms. Murphy has barrels from her outdoor dining area that have concrete in them. And then there was also a suggestion made to her that she consider talking with Taylor Rental, who was doing the tent for her to see if they had additional kind of concrete barriers. She submitted the event application. A safety meeting was held on on Monday. Um, unfortunately, our public works superintendent was unable to attend. Uh, and there were some, you know, discussions during the meeting about safety that came up and that makes sense. And there was some thinking that, well, you know, maybe, uh, you know, DPW has concrete barricades and there's six of them needed and and, you know, maybe they can, you know, put these in place. And so, you know, from my perspective, as as your manager, I I kind of flagged this as a little bit of a concern. Typically providing like cement barricades, um, this is something that service that we've provided for events before, other than large events that have occurred at Coffin Park, there's a couple of them that we put out. And to put these concrete barricades in place, this involves us using our our trucks, our our front end loaders. Obviously, at least two, if not three, Department of Public Works staff to to load them up safely and then put them in place with the loaders and the equipment. And so I asked, uh, Mr. Herbert to, um, kind of put together some cost estimates of what it would take to, um, to do this. Um, if if council was inclined to even approve it, uh, and and said, well, if we're willing to approve it, we want, you know, the event organizer to pay for it. So that that cost would be depending on if overtime is needed between about four hundred and eighty and five hundred and twenty dollars. But, you know, Mr. Herbert kind of raised some concerns, this kind of precedent setting, or we can have others who are there and then going to want to use concrete barriers. And even if they're reimbursing us for the cost, that's that's time that our Department of Public Works isn't available to help out with, you know, all the other, you know, city needs that that we have. So, uh, wanted to flag that that particular issue for you and get some council feedback. And while there, it's something that, um, one, you're okay approving the the tent in the street, but then the larger question of, um, you know, are you okay with Department of Public Works placing barriers? And then three, if you are, uh, you know, would you like reimbursements or should we seek reimbursement for those costs if that's going to occur?
Um, so in the past, she's had that tent there for the St. Patrick's festivities in the past.
She hasn't that.
Yeah, well, is that a picture of a previous year?
So that was during COVID when there was, uh, yeah, so that was a way to kind of.
It was really cold the last couple of years, so I think it wasn't even necessary. So it wasn't even necessary. But, um, yeah. Um, i- is there any way for her to just place those cement barrels out herself as opposed to having our DPW do it?
So the cement barrels, the event organizer would have to put out themselves, but there's additional large concrete barriers that, um, the 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 fire depart, at least the fire department, the sheriff's department recommended, kind of surrounding it that the the barrels weren't enough essentially. So it's my understanding.
That's the fire department's recommendation. Um, is that a that's a recommendation, but is that a are they requiring that? These barriers? I and I know we're talking about safety and we want to be, but.
Yeah, I think that's their recommendation ultimately. At the end of the day, I mean, it's
Right.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming is the reason is you, if you're driving down, you could probably knock the barrel off and keep over and keep going. A concrete barrier is more likely to stop you. Is that the logic?
Yep.
Yep.
I think the concrete barriers redirect the vehicle away from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the my guess is the concern over using the barrels would be if they're struck, they could also roll into the crowd. You know, so.
I thought.
I'm sorry, just real quick. I'm just wondering, do we need more time than thirty days before an event to put an application in? The reason why I'm saying this, I think I think the staff needs a little bit more time. Because here we are right now. She she put it in a month before, two ten. But like you said, you had to coordinate, um, you know, safety meetings. You had to coordinate with Scott. You have to make sure all this is ready for us. And here we are, um, Monday, we have to make a vote. And that wouldn't give her enough time to make or whatever event in the future enough time to, um, make any adjustments for their event. You know what I'm saying? And I'm just wondering if, you know, going forward, should we maybe, I don't know, forty five days before? Or, you know, maybe increase that thirty day?
I asked for sixty and that app she did said she emailed me on that day. She sent us picture. She sent us the pictures first, but we didn't get the application. I followed up with her on, um, I don't know, it wasn't on that date.
Okay, she signed it on two ten.
She signed it, but she thought she sent it over. And then I was like, we never got it. So then she sent it and then I got the, but she did send the pictures.
Oh, so you knew.
The same day she sent said she sent the application.
Okay.
I got the pictures first. She's like, I'll send the application later. I didn't get the application. She said she did. But anyway, she did get it in later, but I don't.
I'm not, I'm not trying to blame anybody, but I'm just asking, does staff need more time? And 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 I think, you know, maybe we should think about changing that.
I haven't. It's sixty days.
Oh, it is sixty days. Oh, I forgot that we did that.
It doesn't work. It doesn't. Most people turn it in, but we'll still throughout the year get people that don't know the process.
All right. Okay.
You know, I mean.
I just hate for. Yeah.
They, I have most of them like that, and all of your, but some of these other ones that come up, they do come a little late.
Oh, I I've been guilty of turning them in.
Yeah. The bigger ones.
Right. I guess I'm just looking out for the then leaders, you know, and having an application a week or two before the event and giving them enough time if this doesn't go through, that they can adjust their event. That's all.
Chris, did you, were you?
Yeah, I just, um, I I thank Christine because she always is is trying to find ways to in the off season, the shoulder seasons and all that kind of stuff to keep the tourism alive in our town. And, um, I, I, I think absolutely we should have DPW it and absolutely have her pay for it. If it's four hundred and some dollars, you said four fifty?
Four eighty.
Four eighty. Yeah, I think I I think it's a good idea to have DPW so that we know that it's done correctly and and have the person who wants to do it take care of the cost.
So just devil's advocate, so I'm just asking a question. So given the concerns about DPW staffing and putting more on them, even if we get those costs and it keeps them from doing other things and sets a precedent. So then others asking, are you, I mean.
All on the same day, right?
They're putting them up in the morning and.
No, they, no, it's I think that goes up.
So they're running it from Taylor Rental and the they are going to put it up on Friday morning. It's going to stay there Friday. Be used Saturday, twelve to eight. Everyone will be out of the tent by eight P M. And then it's going to stay up all day Sunday, and then it's going to come down Monday morning when Taylor Rental works again. And DPW needs to move all those the things beforehand.
So they'll put them out Friday and they'll take them down Monday.
Right, it's going to be up all weekend.
So and now let's be clear though, this is a these concrete blocks. This is something, this is an additional safety measure that we're making. And if we're going to charge her, then we've got to make sure that we follow the same precedent for similar events as well.
I don't think we're ever going to get to the point where.
Like music in the park and, you know, things like that. If we're going to have start putting these concrete barriers out, then we've and I agree, I think that the event people should pay for additional security.
Yeah, I just think that there's always going to be the issue is like Councilmember Clark brought up, well, is five million enough? We are never going to be able to say it's perfectly safe, but I think the concrete barriers are something that that should be there. I think the tent is a great idea and I don't have a problem with DPW. I know they're busy, busy, but no, I don't have a problem with that.
And that that for that money, even though it takes their time, that covers their that covers the labor, right? That the labor was included in that five hundred or.
Their labor and the time that we have the equipment, because we have the equipment charges for the motor as well.
Okay.
Fuel, all that, yeah.
Okay, anything else? This will be on Monday's agenda as well.
The only question I have is probably because I'm one of the newest council members is this is a normal thing the city does allowing this. Okay.
Well, it it's not a normal thing for us. So this is a new request for us to do this for a s- a smaller event. Is that correct?
To to put out, other than putting out like a couple of these barriers, again, at at Coffin Park or like Phoenician and these really large festivals, putting this many, you know, yeah, concrete barrier figures out for an event is is something that we haven't done.
I guess the first question is, to me, there's three questions, right? One is, do you allow the tent to be put up for two or three days or whatever it is and block and take down the street for private business? That's one question. Second question is, do we follow the fire department's recommendation, put up the barricades? And then the third question is, who puts the barricades up and how is that paid for, right? So my first question is, and again, this is ignorance on me, not that I'm questioning anything, but is this normal that the city allows a business to close down a street for two days in the town? Or are we setting a new precedent here? I mean, that's my first question.
Been done before.
What's that?
It's been done before.
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah.
They say that there's not a street closure, so it's a partial lane closure.
Okay.
So they're going to go around it because there's still parking lots and businesses on the street. So they're not necessarily closing the whole street, but you're correct, it will be a partial lane closure for the weekend.
Okay.
I feel like in the past, we closed off that just that small portion. We closed off the street. So there's like people can't drive past the tent.
When we had, when we had the races.
Ago.
Um, when we've had the races, when they started there at Wick's Park, I know that's happened. Uh, when I you, we had the ghoul fest that I did for a couple of years there. We we closed a partial off and not the whole street. Or or organizing for the Christmas parade, we've closed our shallow, but not the whole street.
Yeah, that was discussed at the safety meeting and that was the the recommendation was.
People lane open.
Still lane, yeah.
Okay. Post office.
Mary's.
Right, yeah.
It's on page eighty eight.
It's got the.
And another hotel parking lot and then a business. So there's quite a few.
Yeah, I was just thinking they could still come in from the other side by the post office and then it's just closed off. It's just where the tent is. So they would, you know. But I I that's just what I recall in the past.
As far as the other two, I think we're crazy not if we don't listen to the fire department's recommendations. And in fact, you know, I think I mentioned this in our strategy session, I think we need to maybe take that a step further for another meeting when we get into more safety discussions, especially with tables and streets and things. You know, maybe we put in these barricades and expanding the use of them. But we can get into that later, but I I would strongly support a recommendation made by the fire department, put those barricades in. And as far as the third question goes, to me, it's simple, either DPW has the bandwidth to do it or not, and that and what's the cost? And if they can do it, by all means, and if not, then then we have to have a third party put them in.
Right. Yeah, I think as we go forward and we talk more about event safety, I think we are going to have to talk about resourcing because my concern, I so I'm all for the, you know, barricades. But I'm also concerned, um, that we, um, because we're losing, it's not like we have extra capacity of DPW people. So the time they spend doing that is time, you know, they aren't doing other things. So I think we just need, as we look more broadly at safety stuff, how do we resource that in a way? And, you know.
That makes sense.
Look to our city manager to be sure we, because it's it's not an insignificant ask. I mean, those are heavy, heavy.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's not like, uh, I mean, it's a, it's not as, it's a big, I mean, it's a lot to move those around.
And I support, I support the fire department's, um, recommendations as well. I just want to make sure that, um, everybody gets fair treatment. So when we do have events like this or something like we remember that this is what's going to be required and let them know that and this the X amount of money you're going to have to pay.
We remember that at budget time and, you know, resource discussion.
Well, and frankly, I wouldn't, you know, I don't think Scott would necessarily wants to open up this door of saying that we're going to be the ones to put these barriers in place for every event that needs it. I, I, you know, like this is, you know, we're not in the the heat of the summer when we're even even busier, but we still have a lot that we're working on every day. And this is, you know, three or four hours where our guys are, you know, half a crew is not going to be available to to be doing everything else that they need to be doing. It is, do you want, even though they're reimbursing us, your public resources to be spent, you know? You know, you know, the those arguments be made, right? There's 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 benefits to having these events and there's economic benefit. And, uh, there's residents that attend these events and safety is an important piece of it. I think there's, there's a lot of policy considerations that you have. But I think from a staff perspective, we would caution you, uh, to say at the very least, we should be reimbursed for that cost. This is above and beyond. We normally provide cones, barricades that close the street, trash cans. Um, and, um, we could have a lot of other folks, to your point, say, well, you're doing it for that.
Right.
Right. Yeah, and and I really like the idea of exploring a third party doing this.
Absolutely.
Um, and and pass the cost on to the events. Well, yeah, what, yeah, what kind of.
I think at the end of the day, it's not I our responsibility to plan for folks' events or to provide the supplies that they they need. I think it is, you know, you, the beginning of the conversation, I said that, you know, our suggestion to Christine was that, you know, she brought up the barrels, which was great, but that she may indicated to her she may need additional and she should probably talk to Taylor Rental about large blocks and and having them place them and renting them from them. And she still may, you know, do that. We've reached out to her and haven't heard back on that yet. Um, and I haven't heard a commitment from her either way, whether she'd even be willing to pay for the cost of it. She may say, well, but that's the cost, I'm not willing to do it. But, um, but I I think it's incumbent upon the event organizers for the most part, unless it's, like I said, cones. You know, we have, we have the barricades that close the streets or at least the the signage. We have trash cans, we have some basic things that we provide to help folks out. But, um, you know, this is, this is another layer.
And that's all we used to need back in the day.
Yeah.
Well, I remember it was me going from street to street, putting up those barricades when people kept knocking them down and that was it. But it's a, it's, it's, uh, it's a different, it's, we're in a different time now.
Yeah, no parking signs, we put those out for folks.
Yeah.
So it sounds like there's consensus that DPW shouldn't be on the hook for putting the barricades down. But otherwise, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Does does Taylor provide that service?
I'm not sure.
So right now you're saying that that we're not going to have BPW do the barricades, which means then that violates what the fire department said, so that means no.
Not necessarily. It means we can say you have to have the barricades up and it's your responsibility.
So, but if they had the barricades up, they still have to be inspected, right? Or that would go under a fire inspect, I mean.
The fire department specs inspects the tent.
I know that.
So you'd have to decide.
But I mean, you know, I'm just, I mean, anybody that could do an event, okay, we're getting barricades and they can, you know, how would they know where to put them or?
So I think the question before some Monday will be, is this, are we going to look to the to Wick's Park owner to handle this, say, you know, go for it. Um, but you're, it's up to you to find the barricades. Um, or whether we're going to say we'll do the barricades. And if we decide to do that, then I think we have to decide if that's something, you know, it's sort of, are we doing that once? Or are we going, I mean, or do we want to get into the barricade business?
I don't have a problem with that as long as it is, if I think the first time, if that's what we're going to do. I don't have a problem with that as long as it is, if I think the first time, if that's what we're gonna do is you're gonna have to have a third party to do that. I think we need a fallback just out of, I don't know, trying to get along with people is if Christine can't find somebody to do it, then we should allow the DPW this time and then moving forward. But to just say however far it is away now that the tent goes up, that DPW is not gonna do the bricks and or the concrete. And if you can't find anybody, then no tent. I think that's, I think we should at least find out if she's able to do that. Doesn't sound like I got support, so she's, she's on her own.
I mean, see, I think that too. I mean, you know, again, you know, we're a week and a half before the event and this is before us and and it's a one-time thing. Let's just do it. But moving forward, let's figure out what we're gonna do. Let, you know, right?
Yes.
I guess the only thing and the only thing I would remind us of is when, um, at the same location, we had uh, an ordinance issue and we were, you know, it was a unanimous vote. You have to follow the ordinance. And so now we're and and this isn't an ordinance, but I just, but I I just wanna, you know.
I thought that too, yeah.
So. Um. Okay, anything else on that? Okay. Um, that takes us to public comments. Again, there's a three-minute limit, can be about anything and everything within three minutes. Um, so Mr. Lussler.
First of all, I like to thank my constituents. Great job. You all get tense. Very impressive.
First and last name, Jamie, is that what you wanted?
One thirty-five Grand Street. Uh, if you throw me in the group generously, it'd be three and a half. Um, secondly, I appreciate the time and the effort that all you give. I re, I'm being a former, former educator for, you know, around thirty-seven years or so, still coaching girls basketball. I try to be, one of our mantras is be better than you were the day before, put in the time. And I can really tell that you guys are very passionate and would be, obviously you are great educators. And I'm sure awesome stewards of both the city and your constituents that you have to make decisions for. And I know those are always always easy. And the last thing, if I could talk to a council member to get clarification at the end of this, if that'd be possible?
You.
Just to talk to someone?
Sure. Yeah. Um, yes.
Oh, what he said?
Okay. Right.
This is my first workshop and I just wanted to.
Name.
Oh, sorry, Andrew.
Where you live.
See. Andrew Lighter, non-resident, Love Creek Rapids. Um, so I just wanted to touch back on the S C R, sorry. Um, I know we we touched on it a while, but I wanted to plead our particular case. I think it's pretty unique. Um, we talked about generational transfer. I know you kind of shut the door on that to allocating more resources to looking into that. I just wanted, in our case with three oh four Lucy Street, we we had the transfer of ownership occur in December of twenty twenty-three. We operated not knowing that it was a void license. We figured because it was family, it was safe. If we had known, we would have applied for it. So that's, and now we're kind of paying that. I know we were talking about some exceptions like the Leflers earlier, so I was hoping that I'd urge you to look into our case a little more.
Now, we also have, we transferred.
Your name and.
Basin, Ball, and Sorry, three oh four Lucy Street. Um, we made the transfer in twenty-three to an LLC that was within the same family. It's been around for over ten years within the same family. I think this is our third or fourth certificate that we went through. We weren't due till February. We were allowed to operate all of twenty-four, which we understand now was considered void, which is another question. I don't know how that wasn't caught or how how that operated, but are we retroactively grandfathered in because of this happened in twenty-three before these caps were put in place? And I guess what is the general consensus or opinion on that?
So this isn't, this is more, this is in a Q and A session, so maybe stay after and I'm not, so that we can understand your question.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anyone else in the room?
Hi, Kate, like, um, three, one, two, half Street. So two topics. One is on the ADU, the additions, potentially seventy-six more people being able to stay in the CBD. And it just did make me think about, wow, seventy-six more cars spending the night here. So behind my house is a parking lot and down the street is the high school. So I'm just wondering, as we think about increasing the amount of ADUs in the central business district, where are they all gonna park that night? Because I know talking to some of the B and B owners, they're struggling with parking now before we add more ADUs. And frankly, on the hill is where people park to come to the city when they can't find a spot. So as we're trying to reduce the amount of short-term rentals and sort of the commercialization of the hill, I don't know that adding seventy-six more individual beds, you know, times two people is really without parking considerations. It's just a consideration, parking.
So just that is the potential universe. So, yeah.
I, I, I get.
But I give point, you know, fair point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then on the short-term rental. And I, I think I mentioned, I'm not an attorney. And I think whatever we do for the appeal or the changing of language, at at least for me, I'm comfortable with somehow being able to put it, if you want it LLC this year and you want to move it to a trust next year and you want to put it, you know, to whatever you're planning, is it may change year over year. I would even consider us to consider add a letter that says, yes, you've transferred ownership, but here's a form that says you understand that didn't transfer the short-term rental license. You can, like, so if it's in your name and you moved it to a trust and now it's four people, three people, you haven't transferred the short-term rental license. You transferred your property and you the the primary person who has access to the short-term rental can still do it. So maybe just adding documentation to it. So when people want to make a transfer for some very good financial planning reason, they can also sign a piece of paper that says that this N O A changes who's covered in the short-term rental. That the ownership changes for some financial reason, but the people who are covered, they're unchanged, like, however it would be a good way to do that. But anyway, that's just my thinking. The other thing is, we have fifteen people who realize they made a mistake today. I think we have many more coming because I didn't know anything about the transfer of ownership part. I just happened to be talking to Luke and Don, who were lovely, and they just mentioned, because I just happened to mention I was moving in. And so I think we somehow need to advertise this broadly and more widely, or we're gonna have more people being late and more people requesting some sort of appeal or just being confused. The word ownership for many of us just means like your names. If people don't think about it, at least I didn't in terms of trusts or LLCs or, anyway, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room?
Mark Van Hooft, we're in a four over here at Sagittar Harbors. I'm a part of the LLC with these guys. And we're just trying to get some clarity. I think you already figured that out. As I said, we thought we had everything in place. And the reason we did this, we're not really want to be in the short-term rental thing, but we're trying to keep something for our kids. These are my son-in-laws and my grandkids. My kids all grew up here. We haven't missed the Fourth of July parade in maybe twenty years. And now our little kids come and stuff. Well, the only way we can make that happen, because we outgrew this. And of course, the neighbors are all like, we got too many people and they all come on Fourth of July. The in-laws got older. They couldn't handle the place. Was getting in disrepair. We took it over a couple of years ago. We probably put twenty grand in there. We did the whole outside as far as painting and scraping and all that. Anyway, we just want to do the short-term rental. We thought we were, everything was right. And now we have to get clarity on it. We didn't get our license. And it's gonna cause quite a hardship for these guys. They're the basic reason I got in with them financially. But if we don't have that money coming, it's gonna be a big problem. Probably gonna have to sell or leave this town. And we're going from family to family. We're just trying to go family to family. We're not, we're not developers. We're not a corporation. We just did what uh, her dad was in his eighties now. They're up north. They tried to come, boys here live in Markov, but they tried to come. They love coming here. They've been coming here for fifty years. We were just trying to protect it. And the attorney advised us to put it in LLC, which we did in twenty-three. We didn't know anything about this gonna be a problem. And I guess we're just looking to get some clarity because we're gonna have to make some decision before the financial stuff starts really hurting, so. That's all.
And I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I just want to add one thing. I know some of you.
I'm sorry, Connie Van Hooft. I own, I spoke earlier. We own Sagittar Harbors and we're talking about three oh four Lucy and the S T R. Um, I just wanted to say, I know that you mentioned, some of you mentioned, um, there's other ways of making money. Renting long term, which is wonderful. Yes, I agree. However, in our family, we use it ourselves. It's, it's, we own it and we use it for our family, for our big family, for family get-togethers. As we all mentioned, we love this town. We love coming here and celebrating for all of our celebrations. And so to rent it long term, it wouldn't benefit our family. That's not why we have it. We have it to use it. And the short-term rental helps us also pay pay the bills. So that's something, and I I don't know, you know, maybe some of the other people who have the short-term rentals also use it for personal, you know, weekends like Fourth of July and and big weekends. We we like to use it for our family. So that's something to think about, too. It's not just a moneymaker. It's, it's to gather our family, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, for all of your time you guys put into this. I know you're all, you put a lot of time considering all of our situations. So thanks.
Thanks so much. Anyone else?
I think everybody's coming up here.
Alex, we're one fifty Taylor Street, and I just also want to thank everybody for the thorough discussion and your consideration today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Uh, correspondence, well, we had Alex's letter and then one from Ken Morris. Uh, that takes us to council comments. Joe, do you want to start us?
I just want to thank, um, all the people that came out to share their stories, voice their opinions and and provide valuable commentary. Uh, I want to thank my council peers for, um, these are tough discussions and I think it was good to have everybody collaborate and share their ideas. I learned a lot and a lot of good suggestions. So, um, thank you, and that's all I have.
Great.
Um, I want to thank again everybody for coming out. Um, and and also, um, you know, we've had some really good meetings as a council together. Um, and I want to say that to my council as well. I think into my third year now, I'm starting to enjoy it.
You changed us, Gregory.
But I I just want to say we've had some really good meetings and I think as a council, um, I'm enjoying, um, how we're working together. Um, and then, of course, don't forget this Saturday, the People and Pets, Aaron Go Bark Parade in downtown Douglas all started about noon in front of what, Respite Coffee House? And they'll go down. It's, um, it it's sponsored by a lot of those downtown Douglas merchants, so go visit them. And Cabri from the State Farm, uh, will be, uh, doing hot chocolate and goodies for everyone. There'll be prizes for best pets and, uh, uh, the gals at Lake Shore Pet Boutique, uh, give them a big thank you for keeping that event alive that Ginger Wilkinson started many years ago. So, um, bring your dressed-up pet and and win a prize in Douglas this Saturday.
Great, great. Um, in addition to what they said, again, thanks everyone for sharing your individual stories because there's a lot of, you know, unique problems or unique situations that we, you know, are trying to do our best to wrap our heads around and do the right thing. Um, and also thank you to our staff and counsel, legal counsel for all of your work, uh, because there's a lot to dig into. And, you know, just going, looking what other communities are doing and helping us through a lot of this because, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel, but man, we have a lot more short-term rentals than other communities of our size. So, you know, there's a lot for us to take on and we appreciate, um, staff's work on all of this, so. And also, uh, girls' basketball, keep watching. They're amazing. Sagittar Girls Basketball right now. I don't know the score uh, to tonight's game. We hope to see them on Friday and hopefully win a district championship.
I just echo what everybody else said, too. I think it's, it's just so critical that people pay attention to what's going on and they come and they talk and they let us know about what's going on. The short-term rental issue is gonna go on long after I'm gone. Uh, and it's always gonna depend on if it's yours or or it's kind of kuzoaks gets gored. And so we need to stay on top of it. We need to be flexible and we need to always listen to the constituents that, uh, make this town what it is. Thanks. Great. I don't have a ton to add, but one of the questions we ask people when they apply for boards and commissions is to give an example of when their thinking has changed. And a blessing of, uh, being a city council person is my opinions have evolved and morphed uh, in many ways on many topics, including short-term rentals. And so um, thank you for, you know, everybody here and who's been part of that process. The other thing, this packet was outstanding. And so hats off to Ryan and Jamie and Jake for really helpful background information, um, that was also really well-written. Um, so um, thank you. It makes our jobs a lot easier and it's good reading, which I love. Uh, and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I like a motion to adjourn.
Okay, uh, all, okay, all in favor? Yes? Yes? Any opposed? No?